Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 21st, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Here.
Councilmember Kurt?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We have new services for Bothell residents. The City of Bothell and the YMCA of Greater Seattle have formed a new partnership to provide Bothell residents with free access to behavioral health services at the Northshore YMCA. Services include mental health care, substance use disorder treatment, and more. Don't forget to vote. There are several local decisions for voter consideration on the ballot for the November 4th, 2025 election. Make sure to vote, and there is still time to register if you haven't yet. See you there. Trick or treat on Main Street. On Halloween night, trick-or-treaters will make their way down Main Street for 30-plus candy stops hosted by local businesses, organizations in the City of Bothell. It is free and family-friendly, and it is a ton of fun. Next up, we have public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted sign-ups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We did not receive any written comments, nor did we have anyone sign up to speak. However, I believe we have some folks in the audience. Sir? Yeah, it's all you. If you can state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. There's a light on the dais, actually.
I know, but it only goes on for 30 seconds, right?
No, it'll be green when it starts, and then with one minute, it'll flash, and then 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow.
Hey, my name is Bothell.
Oh, well, go ahead and...
Okay. Oh, hey. Hey, I'm Donald Warren, owner, operator of Bothell Chiropractic Clinic, and I'm here because I'm really hoping you guys truly consider dropping transportation impact fees for businesses. We've been working on another business the last two and a half years, opening a pinball pizza bar. We called the Warren our last name, and the Backlash Bar downtown right here in the 10027 Main Street, if you guys are familiar with the Marketplace Building. So our project was dead in the water last November when the city wanted $301,000 for those fees. Since then, they've been dropped to like $130,000, $31,000, something like that, but still, for us, we're like regular people, my wife and I. That puts it a little bit out of our ability to do that. So we're really hoping that you drop those, and then we could move forward potentially with our plans. So with that building, we got a couple other stumbling blocks that we're working on. One thing is grease trap versus grease interceptor. Grease trap is a traditional thing, but it sinks, catches grease and whatnot. But I think the city wants us to do a grease interceptor, which would mean trenching and bearing a really big unit, like I forget if it's like 500 or 700 or 50-gallon drum. So that's pretty expensive, and we're all, I think we're already going to have to trench across the parking lot down to 522 for the plumbing. So these are all pretty expensive things. We're just regular people trying to do something with a building that's been empty for seven years. So what we're looking at doing, so full cocktail bar, New York-style pizza by the slice, walk up, potentially a pie window on the outside of the building, 30, 40 pinball machines, Monday night pinball league, that's a minimum of 20 players playing right there, up to 60, Thursday night league, weekly tournaments, large-scale annual tournaments that draw players in from out of state and from Canada, like 200 people potentially. So we're looking at doing that, and yeah, really hoping if those fees are dropped, then we're more likely to be able to continue with that. Also, we don't know right now the future of our building that we're in. It's men for sale. So we were going to combo our office, our chiropractic office, in the basement, but if we don't have to, we want to put a secondary bar in the basement as well, and then potentially later on, a rooftop bar. So anyway, we'd like to draw on some business in Bothell, and there's some pretty cool stuff we could do. And yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? And I don't see anyone online. I think that's it.
Thank you so much. All right, next up is reports. First up is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. Just one quick reminder tonight under the city manager report, and that is that we are, as we're heading into the month of November, our council schedule will look a little different. So for anybody who's watching at home and is used to the normal cadence, there will be a meeting on Tuesday, November 4th. We're going to try and keep that meeting to about two hours, ending by 8:00. And then the following week is the 11th, which is Veterans Day, so there will be no meeting, and we'll be back on the 18th. So again, for those who are used to the first three Tuesdays of the month, we'll be two-thirds there, but the holiday will supersede the meeting. With that, I will turn it back over to you for council reports.
Council committee reports. Councilmember Kurt?
Yeah, thanks. So Councilmember Manki and I attended the Snohomish County Fire Protection District Number 10 Joint Fire and Medical Advisory Board meeting on Thursday, October 16th. It went well. Chief Cowan was there to provide an update from our department, as well as we received updates from District 10's design of their new fire station. They were excited that progress has been made. They're also talking about a couple of improvements they have to their vehicles. Anything that I didn't get?
I think you got it all.
Okay, that was it. It was a quick meeting.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. Councilmembers Zornz and I attended the Northshore Parks and Service Recreation Area Board I feel like the big update is that at our meeting in November, we are going to be voting on our final budget, which is a big vote. There will be a public hearing for that. Otherwise, it was pretty regular business, but let me know if I missed something, please. And we got a final reminder today to go to the K-4C Elected Officials Working Group. I will be there. If anyone else is going, I will see you there, or we can take the light rail together, whatever works.
Councilmember Todd, as long as you brought that up, thank you for going. I received word from city staff who might be attending as well, from the planning department, so that's exciting and encouraging that we'll have a contingent of people from Bothell. I think while you're there, some of the things that have been swirling around K-4C that might have deeper discussion that I encourage you to follow up with, if you have the energy and remember, would be to talk about collaborating on implementation of climate action plans. So we will receive an update tonight, but our climate action plan has contingencies for annual or every-five-year kind of updates and refreshers, and I'm hoping, and many of the policy wonks in the K-4C are hoping, that there's some sort of synergy that can be achieved and overlap between all the jurisdictions that are committed to doing that work. So maybe if there's a single first step that can be taken at that meeting would be just to kind of list out all the climate action plans and that are part of the K-4C and see, like, when is the next update for each of these jurisdictions, and is there an overlap on timing that we could kind of band together and do a single, maybe a single consultant report for combining jurisdictions rather than having to do it separately? That would be a really cool thing to do, and I'm hoping that there's at least conversations about that. So just some ideas and some fodder for you to take forward.
No, I appreciate it, and as you think of these things, please send them to me. I'm quite open to hearing about them from you, since you're a normal person, and you're pretty all right.
Councilmember Zornz?
Okay, I will try to make this two pages go fast and maybe whet your appetite for when you do committee assignments at the start of the new year or soon you're running. We had a CTC meeting, and this last summer, I think I mentioned, we got to do a wetlands tour, so there are some fun things that happen at CTC. And we were already updated on the CC5 building, so I don't need to go over that. Off-campus parking continues to be an issue extending north to Beardsley Crossing, all the way down to Brockett Slanting. A suggestion was made for campus to investigate cheaper off-campus parking, as has been done in the past in North Creek with a shuttle. And the last part of CTC is the Truly House, which was at one point hence of being demoed, received a $1.5 million gift from Jan Hunter for renovation, including maybe an outdoor gathering space, so that building's going to be preserved. NPRSA, to add to that, we put the finishing touches on the tenant agreement between NPRSA and the Northshore Senior Center. Just as a point of contrast of if the levy is renewed, it's a $1.5 million budget. If it doesn't, it's a $230,000 budget for the general fund, so it's a pretty drastic drop if that does not pass. Let's see. Oversight on, there was an oversight on materials for the gazebo construction, and that's paused until early 2026 to finish that. And the grant funding for 35% down and design of the youth center, which is about $750,000, is separate from NPRSA's budget, so that's staying untouched. Ben and I are going to be absent for the November meeting, and if Councilmember Dodd is unable to attend, I checked with staff, and they should be able to have enough of a quorum that it should be okay, but if anybody's dying to check out NPRSA, I don't know. It has to be an official assignment, so we should be good. Do you know if you're going to be able to go?
I will be there, yeah.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. And then last Friday, I attended Arch's Together in Housing, and I've appreciated, over the last 10 years, I've appreciated watching Arch grow and become more fine-tuned to effective, affordable housing. It was an update on current work since 1992. 6,000 units have been completed with 110 projects for 30% to 120% AMI, for people who are not familiar with Arch and the work that they do. And then today, LTAC met, and there's a pilot public, boy, this is a tongue-twister, pilot public art project with the Port of Seattle grant that includes involving local businesses to be part of the conversation for art that has a three-to-five-year lifespan. And let's see, cities of Redmond and Bellevue are looking at having a bellhop to move tourists back and forth between them. How that's germane to Bothell is Woodinville and Bothell are kind of watching to see how that works, and maybe we would participate in that. Woodinville Wine Country and a few Bothell businesses are looking for some virtual training for building authentic connections, which is, can help with attracting people to our area. World Cup and all the places in the cities between Bellingham North, down south to Vancouver, Olympia have been identified for watch parties. There are some businesses that may choose to pay the broadcasting fees for their own watch parties, but it sounds like it's pretty well set. And first game is June 15th, and June 19th is when the U.S. gets to participate. And then holiday lights are going to be installed November 19th through January. And also, the 2026 schedule has been decided, so anybody who's thinking maybe they want to do LTAC as a committee assignment, it's a little heavy. They're required to have four meetings a year, but it's because there's a budget, they're going to hit like every other month through the spring, take summer off and come back in the fall, so be contemplating whether or not you want to do or recruit somebody else to do LTAC next year.
All right, next up is projected agenda discussion. Does anybody have an item they would like to bring up? Seeing none, I do. We have heard from an applicant recently that was looking to build a middle housing project, and frontage requirements killed the project. And I'm less interested in figuring out how to make that particular project work or the details, but I worry sometimes that stories like that are a little bit of a canary in the coal mine where there's a lot that we don't hear about. So I'd be interested in looking to build some flexibility into the code or exempting some certain types of development that we know we want to see that are likely to be killed by an extra couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of requirements. And also, if we take away those frontage requirements, I'd be interested in learning what we expect to lose in terms of funding and looking at alternate ways to fund the projects we want. Big picture is housing's a really big problem to solve on its own, and expecting housing to solve other problems that we have at the same time makes me worried that we're going to get neither of those problems solved, like we would see. So I don't know what y'all think.
Are you talking about for businesses or for housing?
Housing.
Okay. All right. For some reason, I thought you were, my brain was tracking you with going down with businesses on Main Street, which can be connected with housing.
We have, well, so I'm talking about frontage requirements, not impact fees.
Okay.
So different than the conversation we're going to have later in the meeting.
Okay.
I don't know if that's something that interests anybody else, but I will toss it open to y'all.
That is something that I am interested in. We've talked about it in some of the study sessions about how when it's a local homeowner who is trying to convert their property to be more usable, that it's not in keeping with the spirit of what, of middle housing if we're throwing a bunch of extra fees on them to make those changes to their property. And so that is something I'm interested in understanding better.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yeah, I'm interested too in having the discussion and looking into it. I know we have this push and pull between wanting to complete our street network, and we have significant gaps, but knowing and weighing the benefits of housing versus fragmented bike network temporarily, or looking at how funding, you know, if we don't get a full bike network, we're also probably not going to get the housing either. And so maybe being more realistic in the policy sense about what it means to balance those two priorities that we have, that would be a good conversation that we should have and that we, I'd like to hear more about. So I'm in support of that as well. I don't know if it dovetails really with the Title 17 conversation that we'll be having tonight, because it is kind of, it is wrapped up together, but if we need to have that as a separate topic, I think I'm all in favor.
Could I ask a question? In that discussion, would you be willing to entertain a modification for something that would not, was not in keeping with the original plan, but allowed for, because I'm thinking in terms of bike lanes. So if you're not creating a built-out bike lane, would you be open to a discussion of something that's in between that would allow space for a cyclist to keep moving through the front of the property?
Yeah, I mean, whatever staff comes back and feels like is the most reasonable thing that we can do, like, I'm really interested in just hearing what they come up with in terms of ideas. Like, I too understand the need to pay for our transportation system, and the, I mean, I'm open to doing things the best way we can do them. City manager?
So I heard three voices in support of having a further conversation, and typically then what we would do in a projected agenda is bring back a scoping of, here's what it would look like, here's a schedule, here's what we would do. Just as a reminder, there was some harkening back to recent conversations. Part of that is, is that within the last year, council, you've already created a waiver for any development that is three units or less. And so what I just want to clarify is that you would now be looking for the ability to waive for more than three units, and I just want to make sure we're on the same page on that, as well as, yeah, again, as the mayor said, I think how we scope it to bring it back could also be looking at what is included in the bike plan that went through Planning Commission and through the council. So we'd probably have to come up with a plan to, if you want to initiate this, that goes right back through and look at what the implications would be, but that's kind of where things are at. So we'd be looking at more than three units, and then what does that do in terms of actually achieving what the council, I know, is very excited about in the bike plan? So those are a couple of the things that we would be having to scope.
Yes, and I think my interest really lies with the incremental development and infill development, and so I'm not thinking that, like, short plats or subdivisions should be exempted. That's not the intent of what my interest is, and I'll let other council members speak to their interest, but I'm thinking more along the lines of middle housing and the infill development that has so many other hurdles and is sort of a separate housing element and project that we're trying to achieve.
Agree there. I would be more comfortable with a little bit more complicated decision than just a certain number of units, because like if somebody does a three-unit short plat, like, I don't, I don't want to exempt that.
No, I think that's fine. I just wanted to, again, remind council that you already, that was a decision you made. So if there's more information, I want to make sure we bring, we don't just bring the same conversation back as it was presented, however it walked through Planning Commission and to council, again, within the last year, that was the decision that was made. So I guess I'm curious about what more information that you would be looking for that would help you get to what the desired target is, but I think that's what we can do in scoping. And then, Mayor, I'd be happy to talk to you offline and hear a little bit more so we can hit the target.
Yeah, and so that conversation was driven off of a couple people that were building ADUs, and I think we kind of solved for that, like, one immediate hurdle that we'd been hearing about. Instead of doing something a little more comprehensive in terms of, like, here's what we would like to see, like, I don't like hearing stories about how things like that prevent housing, and again, like, it makes me worry that there's a lot of stories that I don't hear, because I'd imagine there's probably a lot of people that, you know, well, project's not viable, and they just don't send an email or come to council. So I would be interested in looking at it with fresh eyes and a little bit different light and just seeing what we can do to help get what we want. Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. I'm not raring to make a change. I think what might be helpful, given that we just went through our comprehensive plan process, the bike plan is newer, just maybe an example, and this can pull from, like, preapproval meetings, permits that were requested, whatever, but like examples of projects throughout the city and what they do and don't require, especially ADU versus, you know, a smaller project, larger project, just to kind of level set for the council. I think that in a time of change, it can be easy to hear, especially because we're not always in context, hearing from someone who's trying to build something and then hearing, kind of, I think, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, and I, sometimes you get part of a story, and then you get another part of a story, and then maybe you're reading the Bothell Municipal Code, which, dare I say, is not always an easy read. So just kind of like, here's examples of what is happening, and is this what we want? Is this what we were hoping for? Can it be better? Or, oh, hey, we actually like this because X, Y, Z. So just kind of that level set, whether that's a memo or small briefings or whatever it ends up being, but that would be really helpful for me personally.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, since you insisted on somebody saying something. It'll be interesting to have the discussion, perhaps a study session or what Councilmember Dodd said, you know, the additional information will be very helpful just to evaluate. Thank you.
Just to level set to, we probably won't be able to have that conversation until the new year, just based on the council calendars, but what I would want to do before the year is up is to bring back kind of the scope of what to expect. So that's what we'll aim to do, if that makes sense.
Sounds reasonable to me. Anybody else on projected, any other, any other items? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. I would love to get a motion to approve. Councilmember Kurt?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kurt and a second from Councilmember Dodd to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, we are going to take a break. It is 6:25. Welcome back. Next up is the first of our public hearings. We're going to have a public hearing on proposed draft code for the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA threshold updates. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you're correct, we have four public hearings tonight, so we're going to start things off, though, with a topic that has recently been before council and the Planning Commission, and I am going to turn things right over to staff and send it to our planner, Jaclyn Sampson. Or, yeah, Jaclyn Sampson, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm back here tonight to talk about the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA update, and we'll have our public hearing today. So city council action today is city council will hold a public hearing for the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA threshold updates. Some background information, so the city is required by the Growth Management Act to complete the Critical Areas Ordinance update by the end of 2025. So we started efforts in December 2024 when FAWCIT prepared our gap analysis for the city with having our first study session with Planning Commission on July 16th, 2025, and follow-up study sessions with city council and Planning Commission throughout September and October. And on October 15th, Planning Commission voted and approved with revisions the final findings, conclusions, and recommendation document. Since the last review, staff have made some minor code edits reflected in the Planning Commission's approved version of the code and noted in their findings, conclusions, and recommendations. The key change is in geologically hazardous areas section, erosion hazard areas, so that means slopes of 15% or more no longer require a critical areas permit or report, while landslide hazard areas, which is slopes of 40% or more, still do. So I have a map on the screen right now. This is an area just north of downtown. The yellow indicates erosion hazard areas, and orange shows landslide hazard areas. So as you can see, a lot of the city, and a lot of the different parcels in the city have yellow in it. So many parcels have slopes over 15%, which under the old code would have required a critical areas permit or report. However, Public Works has long exempted erosion hazard areas since soil information is already required, and most city parcels have slopes over 15%, but are below landslide hazard levels. So the proposed code edits just align with current Public Works practices around what they require for critical areas permits and reports. Landside hazard areas still require both a cap and a critical areas report. So a second edit that we have tonight, city staff recommend adjusting the proposed upstream riparian management zones from 125 feet, which is reducible to 100 feet with vegetative buffer, and change it to 175 feet, reducible to 150 feet with a vegetative buffer. This adjustment is what was initiated after examining what other jurisdictions decided to do with their plans. We're all, all the jurisdictions are working simultaneously to meet the December 31st deadline. Therefore, we haven't had much clarity on what peer communities have been doing until recently. So our previously proposed widths, which were far lower than what most comparable cities were implementing, and WDFW did not support the earlier narrower buffers. So increasing the upstream buffer alliance with Bothell with peer communities addresses WDFW comments and better balances best available science with state provisions allowing limited departures from BAS to recognize the built environment. So you can see those changes on the screen highlighted in blue. with state provisions allowing limited departures from BAS to recognize the built environment. So you can see those changes on the screen highlighted in blue. These changes were supported by planning commission as well as WDFW, who emailed us actually today, a letter of support for those buffer streams. It'll be attached to the agenda packet of the December 2nd city council meeting where the critical areas ordinance will be up for final ordinance. So Bothell has 12 F streams. We're going to go through some of the maps that kind of highlight them. They're all within wetlands or high habitat areas. So given these conditions also, we do not anticipate a significant change in the number of parcels affected by the revised buffer width because they're already kind of following the wetland buffer areas for the most part. So these are some of the different streams right here. And then as you can see on this next slide, that kind of tealish striped area are the wetland buffers. So a lot of the stream, these streams are still in the buff, those wetland buffers also. So they would be following those buffers for the most part because they are larger than what we are proposing with the riparian management zone streams. So again, here are some other, we have Queensbury Creek on the left and then that one on the right. Again, they're within those wetland areas. And then lastly, we have Wayneeta Creek. So during the planning commission public hearing last week, we received two comments regarding maximum disturbance area and the reasonable use exemption section. The standard was recommended by WDFW in the Fossil Report to establish a clear limit on total disturbance, covering all structures and impervious surfaces, and to provide greater predictability for applicants and ensure consistency with reasonable use provisions. So the draft thresholds were developed using information from peer communities available at the time. And as other jurisdictions finalize their critical areas ordinance updates ahead of the December 31st deadline, staff are reviewing these new examples and reevaluating whether the adjustments to Bothell's proposed disturbance limits are warranted in response to public agency feedback. Okay, the findings and conclusion recommendations can be found on page 163 of the agenda packet. On the screen, we have the planning commission's conclusions. In summary, the critical areas ordinance and SEPA threshold updates have completed the full process. So drafting, public notice, review, and planning commission consideration. These updates keep Bothell code aligned with state requirements like the GMA and the comp plan, and they also provide clearer standards for development, environmental protection, and support the community's overall health, safety, and welfare. And on the screen, we have the recommendation, which is based upon these findings and conclusions. In the entire record, the planning commission recommends the city council adopt the proposed critical areas ordinance and SEPA threshold code updates as exhibit A. Next steps, after tonight's public hearing, we will return back on December 2nd for the final ordinance. Now I turn it back to you, Mayor Thompson, to open up the public hearing.
Fantastic. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:47. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. I have Ann Agard signed up. Ann, you'll have three minutes when you're ready.
Give you a copy of my comments. Ann Agard. Edits to this proposed October 21st draft to the Bothell Critical Areas Ordinance are necessary to avoid confusion in implementing the regulations and to comply with best available science. I strongly support including the recommended changes to the Bothell code that are made by the WDFW. The reference chart is on page 153 to 162 of your packet. Three changes need to be made to bring it into conformance with best available science. One changes to 1404.900, which are special regulations applicable to North Creek Daylight. The second is to 1404.920, performance standards, general requirements regarding habitat buffer averaging. And the third is to 1404.930, to stream mitigation banks. These codes are necessary to implement best available science. But there are also changes to the suggested code that are necessary to implement the language regarding off-site mitigation included in the FACET, I'll call them FACET, Critical Areas Report, Section 7, code pages 119 to 120 of your agenda packet. C, Section 1404.220, mitigation requirements, Section C, regarding off-site mitigation. The Critical Areas Report section on off-site mitigation must be compatible with both performance standards found in Bothell Municipal Code 1404.540, Performance Standards for Compensatory Mitigation Requirements, and the WDFW Recommended Stream Performance Standard referenced above. The current adopted Bothell Municipal Code 04.540 Performance Standards requirements are necessary to understand and implement the FACET language proposed for an amended critical report section. The clarity is necessary to implement these proposed code changes. Therefore, I request that the Bothell staff direct, that the Bothell council direct staff to contact, contact the Department of Ecology regarding the wetland section changes, to contact WDFW and reconsider implementing the proposed changes documented previously. And I offer to meet with the staff to further discuss the changes to the code provided in Section 7 of the FACET report that are necessary to provide consistency with the current adopted code for compensatory mitigation, Bothell Municipal Code 1404.540.
Thanks, Ann.
I have given her copies of my statement.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak to this critical areas ordinance public hearing? I don't see anyone.
In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:52. And next up, we will have a public hearing to consider the 2025, 2026 mid-biennium budget amendments. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we're now going to shift gears into a set of three public hearings that have to do with the budget. Two of them are for the city of Bothell, and then one is where your annual tradition of being able to take on the role of the Emergency Medical Services Board. So you will not have to come back to me. We'll, we're not going to change players at the table, just, just titles. With that, I will turn things over to our Finance Director Kwan Wong to walk you through the introduction and, unless he kicks it straight to Andrew.
Our Deputy Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, for your consideration tonight. Public hearings for the 25, 26 mid-biennium budget. And also the county property tax rates. Council action tonight, we're asking to hold public hearings, two separate public hearings for this section. The first for the 25, 26 mid-biennium budget amendment, and then the second public hearing for the proposed 1% increase. Plus new construction for the King and Snohomish County property tax levies. Again, the, we're asking for two public hearings in the section on the mid-bid budget and the property tax levies. I'll walk you through the mid-bid budget amendments, and then we'll hold the first public hearing, and I will walk you through the rest afterwards. Just summary for the public, the general fund adjustments for the 25, 26 mid-biennium budget are a transfer to the budget stabilization fund. The beginning of spending of the opioid settlement funds and a correction of an item that was missed in the original budget for low-income housing assistance. The capital project adjustments, there are three parts to it. Budget updates, which are increases in costs for capital projects, scheduling updates, which are shifting a budget from 2024 to the new biennium for projects that were delayed. And the final item is 3.7 million for shop one site purchase, which will be fully reimbursed by Washington State. Last week, council had some questions about how the capital adjustments will affect our budget. This is truly net neutral to our capital budget. The new income from, from this amendment, be the washed out reimbursement, which we received on Friday. Insurance recoveries for damage to the bridge, grant funding and some fees. The remaining for the scheduling adjustments are from the fund balance. These are for revenues that were collected in 2024. They're not spent for the projects because they have been delayed to the new biennium. So at this point, I will ask that council hold the public hearing only for the 2025, 26 mid-biennium budget amendment. Sorry.
You're good. All right, it's 6:55. I'm going to open the public hearing. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Did not have anyone signed up to speak. However, if anyone in the audience wants to speak to this mid-biennium budget amendments public hearing, please raise your hand.
In that case, at 6:56, I am going to close the public hearing, and we will move on to a public hearing regarding adoption of 2026 1% King and Snohomish County property tax levies.
Okay, so the next section is the public hearing for the King and Snohomish County property tax levies. The levy ordinance are due to the counties by November 26, 2025. The 2026 budget did assume that the 1% increase plus new construction would be taken. Just another reminder of what the typical taxpayer pays to the city. It's a relatively small portion of overall property tax. Majority goes to the state school funding and the North Shore School District funding. Typical King County taxpayer in 2025 paid $1,463 and slightly less than Snohomish County, $1,265. And at this point, we would ask council to hold the public, public hearing on the proposed 1% increase to the King and Snohomish County property tax levies for 2026.
All right, it is 6:57. I'm going to open the public hearing. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Did not have anyone signed up to speak. However, if anyone in the audience wishes to talk on the King and Snohomish County property tax public hearings, please raise your hand. I don't have anyone.
All right, it's still 6:57, and I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will move on to a public hearing to implement the 1% increase in the EMS levy covering the Snohomish County portion of Bothell for 2026.
Okay, so for your consideration is a 1% increase in the Emergency Medical Services levy. We will need to adjourn the Bothell City Council meeting and reconvene as the Bothell Emergency Services, Emergency Medical Services District Board for this section.
All right. I'm going to adjourn the Bothell City Council meeting and convene the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board.
Excellent. Board action requested tonight is to hold a public hearing for the, to consider the 1% increase in the EMS levy covering the Snohomish Port, Snohomish County portion of Bothell, and that should be for 2026. Just a little history of the EMS levy, the Bothell Urban EMS District was created in 2005 to fund emergency service, emergency medical services in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell. City of Bothell residents who live in King County pay the EMS levy through the county. And again, the adopted budget assumes that the 2026 EMS levy increase, 1% increase plus new construction is taken. And at this time, I asked the board to open public hearing to consider the 1% increase to the EMS levy for 2026.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:59 PM. Board Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. I do not have anyone signed up. However, if anyone in the audience wishes to speak to the EMS levy increase public hearing, please raise your hand. I felt like that was the one.
All right, at 7 o'clock, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to adjourn the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board and reconvene the Bothell City Council meeting. And that is the last of our public hearings. Thank you. All right, next up, we have ordinances and resolutions. We have a resolution to extend the salary commission deadline. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. That was some exceptional navigation for public hearings. Nice job. Yeah, with, as you mentioned before us tonight is our ETS Director Matt Pruitt. We've recently discussed the salary commission, but Matt has an update and a request for an amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The salary commission has been actively and responsibly carrying out its duties to review city council compensation in accordance with Bothell Municipal Code 2.92 and RCW 352115. After six meetings that began on August 7th, a public hearing and vote are scheduled for October 30th. And the commission is on track to meet its original 90-day deadline of November 5th. However, as is typical in the city's process, additional time is often provided after a public hearing to allow for final deliberation and consideration of public input. In light of that and out of an abundance of caution, this resolution proposes extending the commission's deadline to November 30th. This extension is not a delay, but a safeguard. It ensures the commission has the flexibility to consider all feedback and engage in further discussion if they determine that it is needed.
If nobody has any questions, I would accept a motion. Councilmember Dodd?
I'd like to move the recommended action. Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Aldrichs. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Since nobody said anything, I'll just say that all makes sense, and thank you for explaining that it's not a delay. It's a precautionary measure. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
We missed you, Matt.
All right, we have a study session. We'll do it down there.
Hi, Shelley. Do you want to do a mic check while we're on break?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Perfect. And are you able to control your own slides or do you want help?
Yep, I can bring it up. I will do that now while we're transitioning.
All right, I've got my note taken, fingers ready.
Perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you.
I shouldn't say welcome back, we didn't adjourn, we just walked down here, but it feels like a break. We have a study session, first of three tonight is, the first one is the 2026 Legislative Session Presentation. And I'll kick it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, City Council, this will be the, as the mayor said, the first of three study sessions. And this one really is, it feels like it's way too early, and yet, we are on the eve of the next legislative session. So as you'll recall, the council approved a legislative agenda and policy manual for two years. We are in the middle of that, so much like with our budget, there's an opportunity to look at progress. So Shelley Helder is here with us tonight to walk us through what was accomplished in 2025, but more importantly, what is to come in 2026. And then also, just note that there have been some proposed edits to your policy manual that Shelley will also walk you through, but we'll want to make sure that we capture everything completely. There's no action required tonight with tonight's study session, but presuming that council does wish to make changes to your agenda and/or policy manual, we'll put that on a future calendar so that we have a finalized version as we head into January when the session starts. So with that background in place, I'm gonna turn things over to Shelley to walk you through what's to come.
Wonderful. Well, good evening. It is good to be back with you all to continue preparing for the 2026 State Legislative Session. So my presentation tonight is gonna cover four different areas. We're gonna start by just doing a brief preview of the 2026 session, what we know will occur. There's a lot that, of course, we can't predict. I'll provide some context for the budgets and how that correlates to funding requests. We'll talk about the city's draft legislative agenda and policy manual, and then we'll wrap up about, talking about what the next steps are from here. So the 2026 session is the second year of the biennium. It's a short 60-day session, and it's often referred to as a non-budget year, since the legislature just makes adjustments to the two-year budgets. The adjustments are referred to as the supplemental budgets. Although there are nine legislative races on the November ballot, there's really only like one race that I would consider truly competitive, that is the Senate race in the 26th Legislative District. And truly, no matter the outcome of that race, Democrats still have a several-seat advantage in both the House and the Senate, so they will retain the majority in both chambers for the 2026 session. Every bill that was introduced in the 2025 session that was not passed into law will be automatically reintroduced in 2026, and legislators will also be open, they will be able to introduce new bills. Following the 2026 session, there will be a campaign season where the entire House and half of the Senate will be running for reelection. For this reason and the more logistical reasons of it being a short 60-day session, we typically don't see controversial policies advanced in even numbered years. So some of this will be review, but I think every once in a while, it's important to kind of level set and make sure we're all on the same page in understanding of the state's budgets. So the state has three budgets, operating, transportation, and capital. And as was mentioned before, they adopt the budget every two years. The state's current budget runs from July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2027. 2026 will be the supplemental year. The operating budget is facing a roughly $900 million deficit based on most recent forecasts, and that's over the four-year outlook. You'll hear different numbers depending on whether folks are talking about the current two-year budget or the four-year budget. The state is obligated to balance their budget over four years, which is why it can sometimes be confusing. That $900 million figure reflects the decline in anticipated revenue, but it does not account for any potential increased investment in programs that have lost federal funding. In the short session, legislators will have to either raise new revenue through taxes and fees or cut expenses. We know that they did, they chose to raise revenue in the 2025 session as well as make significant cuts to the budget. What we're hearing early on is that lead budget writers are resistant to considering more revenue in the 2026 session, which of course leaves the other option on the table, which is looking for savings within the budget by cutting costs. Transitioning to the transportation budget, for the first time in a really long time, the transportation budget is not facing an immediate shortfall. So revenues are pretty much coming in really close to where they were forecasted within the current biennium. Looking out into the future, the revenues are declining, so there's not gonna be, I think, I would not anticipate budget writers to project, to plan to spend more in future Everything I've been hearing from transportation budget writers is they are remaining committed to finishing projects that have begun as a primary priority, as well as finding new ways to invest in maintenance and preservation. Those are kind of the two pillars that legislators in both chambers and both sides of the aisle are committed to. The final budget is the capital budget. It is the most stable of the state's three budgets because it's primarily funded through bonds. The current biennial capital budget is $7 billion, and so that means with the available bonding capacity, there's $349 million for a supplemental capital budget. As you know, that's relatively small compared to $7 billion. There are some additional sources of funding for the capital budget, but in a supplemental year, a capital budget is relatively small. So despite it being a non-budget year, the state's budget process is already underway. So it began with state agencies preparing their budget requests and submitting those to the state's budget office, which is called the Office of Financial Management. And that occurred back in September. And so from then until mid-December, the governor's office is reviewing those agency requests and then developing the three budgets in accordance with the governor's priorities, as well as input that he may receive from stakeholders. The governor's budgets are proposals. They serve as the starting place for legislative discussions. And then throughout the course of the legislative session, each chamber develops its proposed budget. So there ends up being three proposals, the governor, House, and the Senate for each of the three budgets. Ultimately, a final version of each budget is agreed upon by the legislature and delivered to the governor for his signature. Any of the changes that are adopted in the supplemental budgets will take effect July 1st of 2026. So in considering the city's priorities for 2026, it is helpful to build on the existing 2025 legislative agenda. As it was mentioned, the city's legislative program is guided by two documents. The legislative agenda is the document that lists the top issues or the priorities that the city wants to have a proactive role in advancing. And the policy manual outlines issues that have a direct, or I guess indirect, impact on the city, but where the city wants to take a position and weigh in and support or oppose if the topics arise. As a best practice, the city adopts a two-year legislative agenda to align with the state's two-year budget cycle. And as the City Manager mentioned, we're in the middle of that two-year cycle, so now is the time that we're looking to make updates, both to the legislative agenda and to the policy manual. And what we're considering here is what are the things that were accomplished in the first year of the biennium and/or what circumstances have arisen or have changed that we would want to make changes mid-biennium. As a council, you set these priorities, and this initial conversation this evening is about hearing what your priorities and preferences are. So to begin that portion of the discussion, I'm gonna outline the draft priorities that are on the current legislative agenda and that we are recommending be carried forward into 2026. So I will start by mentioning that the capital budget request for the Woodcrest Utility Improvement Project has been removed since the city was awarded $1.5 million in the 2025 session, and that was really in large part because of the leadership of Representative Dorr and Senator Stanford and Representative Kloba. The preservation of Shelton View Forest for recreational purposes remains a legislative priority. This issue has been challenging for us to advance, but feels like we're making perhaps some progress in having better clarity on what the problem is. And it's not simply insufficient resources to acquire the property, it's the ambiguity about the value of the property, which essentially makes it a moving target, and it's even then harder to hit. So this is a priority where we're gonna be leaning heavily on the first district legislators to help advance, and this is a long-term priority. This is not something we anticipate achieving even in this biennium, but it's something that we're continuing to make progress on. The second priority, I guess before I move on from there, I do want to mention, one of the ways that we're working to advance this is we're wanting, we're trying to get the key decision-makers out to the property in order to see it and see some of the challenges and see its assets, and then brainstorm what solutions can be pursued in order to preserve it. So that's something that we've been trying to get scheduled for several months now. We have a date confirmed where the Commissioner of Public Lands is scheduled to come out, and that's November 14th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. The vision, we're still putting together the specific agenda for that time, but wanted to make sure that you all are aware that that's really being driven by this being one of the city's legislative priorities. The second priority is multimodal connections, and really more specifically, it's a request for state investment of $20 million over six years to assist with the implementation of the citywide bike plan. I would say this is another ambitious priority. Although this is a funding request, it's more fundamentally a policy request to shift the way the state, or the way that the transportation budget writers invest state resources. Right now, the state awards funds to individual projects, either through a direct appropriation or through a competitive grant program. But this request, at least as I understand it, is to invest lump sums into communities that are demonstrating a leadership role in transitioning away from car-centric development and incentivizing multimodal connections. So that's really what we're looking to advance here. As an interim step, and in response to our delegation's request to know if there is a singular high-priority project within the city's bike plan, we are recommending to include language that calls out a single project that could be funded if a smaller dollar amount is available. So that is language that you can see reflected in the draft legislative agenda in your packet. The next priority is removing barriers to housing construction, and this remains a priority for the legislature as well. The language that's on the legislative agenda has been updated to include a reference to reducing regulatory burdens. We are aware of at least one concept that's being developed to create a pilot program for jurisdictions to opt into eliminating certain regulatory requirements for the purposes of stimulating more housing. And so that, the language reference there is intended to position the city to be able to support both that proposal as well as others. And then the final priority is continuing to protect the funding that has been allocated to the Bothell Way multimodal project, as well as notifying legislators that there is an outstanding funding need for the 2931 biennium. We're also recommending changes to the policy manual based on previous guidance from the council and/or discussions that have occurred since the current manual was adopted. So these changes are being shared as a starting place. We're looking for your input and feedback to know if this verbiage reflects the council's position. Under the Community Development Section, we've updated the statement on annexation to acknowledge that the tool should be used for changes to urban growth boundaries when doing so improves service efficiency and protects rural lands, not simply just to expand a city's boundary. We're also suggesting an update to the statement on planning for and accommodating housing needs to support legislation that would clarify a city's responsibility to plan for and accommodate. That, what a city is responsible for with that verbiage has come up many times as being less than clear. Under the Human Services Section, we added a statement in support of the creation of a universal healthcare program, and this is in response to the resolution the council adopted earlier this year. Under Public Safety, we've added a section to reflect the challenging nature of responding to and preventing human trafficking, and this is a recommendation that came from the Police Department. Under Public Works, in the Salmon Recovery topic, we included a statement expressing the city's support for YRET 8 legislative priorities. And I think those are all the changes that have, that are being included based on feedback to date. If the council would like to see the additional edits to the statements in the manual or addition of any new topics, that is part of the feedback that we're looking for this evening. So before I open it up for discussion, just wanted to show where we are in the process and what comes next. We're at the first step where we're looking for council input and guidance on edits to the legislative documents. The, I guess because we anticipate the city to remain committed on the preservation of Shelton View, we've really been focusing our efforts on advancing that priority. And so rather than having a formal sit-down meeting with the first district legislators like we've done historically to talk through all the items on the agenda, we're really wanting to focus our efforts on that Shelton View tour and brainstorming solutions. So that's what's coming up in November. I will say this is an outline, this timeline is a recommendation, it doesn't necessarily mean the city has to stick to this timeline, but it is awareness of what comes in December is typically the time that we would connect with our legislators, remind them of what the city's priorities are, and then the legislative session begins the second Monday of January, on January 12th. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and turn it over to you all for feedback on your draft agenda and policy manual.
Thanks, Shelley. It's good to see you. Hello, and I'm excited to continue working with you for the legislative session season that's approaching. It's gonna be really quick, so I don't know how quickly we'll be able to kind of talk with legislators and work with them to understand some of the issues that our city is facing. So I appreciate getting out early. I really like highlighting Shelton View Forest. I think this is the generational opportunity that we have, and we're advancing on lots of different fronts and trying to work with what we've got. So I appreciate you. So I appreciate you including and highlighting that as part of our priority. I think I'm thinking personally about how I approach. My own sort of storytelling about Shelton View Forest and how um I'm gathering. Information and stories from constituents and I'm um learning more about. How to sort of convey why it's such an important um piece of of land for our city and the people who. Who recreate and um live here, and so. Uh I would entertain any information or any like suggestions that you have about how to make um like a really. Uh comprehensive and worthwhile um story that we can use in conversations with. Either legislators or um decision makers uh that you might have experience kind of crafting those narratives or. Um or working with other uh other folks in similar conditions. So that's one thing. I really appreciate um staff uh for taking notes. As we sit on the dais over the course of a year and shout out, well, we need to talk to the legislature about that. You took our notes and I'm seeing um through here a lot of threads that I um. Had picked up and I just threw out and now they're here, so I really appreciate seeing that and that it was an intentional. I know that it was intentional on the part of staff to to take those um scraps that uh we all had been sharing up on the dais and. Weaving them into our um our policy manual and also just um. Yeah, being mindful of the setbacks and the challenges that we face. And and bringing those forward and uh being collaborative with the legislature. So thanks to staff, kudos to you too. I wanted to explain to um fellow council members a little bit about Ria eight and why that's on there and why I'm concerned. So we're in a new funding paradigm now where um it, it's not new, it's kind of the old way of doing things. Federal funding for uh recovery project ecosystem recovery projects is dried up. And we're going to have to rely on our own um internal sources. Um we're going to have to rely on state sources and we're going to have to rely on private sources. Um and so I have been blown away with um the creativity of our city staff on looking into. A private and local sources of funding for our big projects like Way Nita and um Fish Passage Projects in the city. So I'm really encouraged on those two fronts, but one of the reasons why I wanted to highlight Ria eights. Uh this like regional salmon watershed group. Their policy um discussions because there's a couple of things that are just outside of our control as a city that. In coalition with our neighbors, we can have a a bigger voice, and some of that is protecting these state sources of funding. Uh that we will be relying on in the future, in the near future for funding and construction of our big project. And so we need to make sure that that pipeline is left open, a funding is left open, not even just for our projects, but for regional projects. So it's really important that we um sort of uh echo support for um those funding systems that come through from the state Department of Ecology. Uh Fish and Wildlife um and Department of Natural Resources, so those funding streams should be kept open. And then the other thing that's kind of regional that might be coming down from Ria eight is um predator uh uh suppression. And so there are lots of like fish get eaten by more than people and orca. Um and there are some invasive species of fish um that eat salmon uh that we so carefully count and nurture. Um in Lake Washington, Lake Sammamish, uh and obviously in the river that connects them. Through our city, and so um funding for predator suppression has um been taken out of state funding. And um King County has picked up the bill for that, but they can't do it for very long. And so um as soon as we stop suppressing those predatory fish. This is like the, this is the nightmare of the the frogs in our, in our ponds. That we were talking about just a couple of weeks ago, um but it's, it's a bigger problem. And so we need to, if we're spending so much money on restoring our environment. And uh stewarding our own land and waters, um we should be thinking about how they intersect with our region. Um and so that funding stream is uncertain and in a funding light um legislate, legislative session. I don't know um how to really find uh funding for that, but I think um it's important to continue to echo support for. Um those sort of regional projects that we actually really depend on. So yeah, I think I'll leave it there, and uh if you have, Shelley, if you have any ideas about storytelling or narrative building, um I really welcome those.
Yeah, I think my, my initial response to that is what you're already doing by collecting. Stories from constituents is really important. As, as the council, council members, you are the, the ambassador from the city to the state. Um and so speaking on behalf of residents who are wanting this property preserved. Is really like the, the important role that you serve in this, and so. Yeah, collecting those stories and being able to, you know, succinctly share them and um an elevator pitch. Like a, a short elevator pitch and then also having a little bit longer of a, of a spiel um is what I would, I would recommend.
I'm gonna jump in and. I haven't finessed this. I feel like going after um Councilmember Curd talking about the forest and ecosystems is kind of a, kind of a choice I'm making right now. I saw on the draft agenda that um we were looking at supporting law enforcement efforts to crack down on human trafficking. And I think that's something that's in a lot of minds right now. We're seeing a lot of concerning things in our community. And I wonder on top of that, if there is a way to create consequences for landlords who lease spaces that are used for this. For um revoking business licenses. I saw Woodinville had an ordinance and it was. It was an interesting thing, but I wonder if there's a way to create more consequences in more of the pipeline that leads to. People leasing places where human trafficking occurs and anything we can add to create. Just consequences from every angle so that this becomes something that is not worth trying, I think would be really helpful, but. That's like half of an idea.
That's excellent. Yeah, appreciate the suggestion. I think um what in my conversations with the. With staff on this, we're trying to figure out both what do we want the state to do to provide more resources to locals? Because it, it manifests at a local level, but also what do we want the state to do to get at it upstream? Um so it's a, it's a, there, there needs to be a multifaceted strategy, and I, I think you hit on one that could be implemented, consequences at the local level.
Hi Shelley, um I have to look over there to see you, but you're up here for me.
That's okay, you can look at the screen.
Carson has the camera angles down. Hello. Oh, I did it the wrong one. It's that one. Over there.
It just moved. It just moved. Now you're looking at the right.
See, I'm just gonna let whatever happen, happens.
Carson's like the one person that's like always sits, so it catches his good side.
We could all learn from him. I, I really do appreciate all of the preparation that went into this and that it is um just so uh. Ready for us to discuss. Um I feel like in, in previous years, um it's taken. More to get to this point, and so I feel like we're maybe getting into a good groove um in terms of, of, you know, this, the format, the structure. You, I think you laid a really great groundwork for last year. Um and it's, it's always very exciting to see something crossed off because we accomplished it. Um and so that the edit for Woodcrest is, um it looks like it's just struck out of there, but like that's because something really great happened. And so um, you know, thank you to, to our delegation, to you, to staff, uh you know, and and the legislature for making that happen. I was going to ask you um to, if there was any more details that you could share around the um. The proposed on page two hundred and two of our agenda packet. Uh it mentions advancing the hundred and second avenue um. Uh shared use path, uh which would be over the bridge connecting downtown into Riverside. Um I'm really glad to see that the work was already done to identify something that might be. Um a, a project to go to the legislature for. I think it's a very um. Wise and prudent idea to say instead of just saying, help us do this, like. Tell us specifically what it is that um we're prioritizing, and so glad to see that that's in there. I do think that it's an important connection, and because it's part of, I think it would be part of the. Bridge replacement, that it would be a, probably a pretty costly project to make that happen. Other ideas, like when I was looking, when I was thinking about like places that I would prioritize in Bothell would be. Uh Beardsley between the college um connecting downtown and North Creek. Especially as we have so many um students who have moved into that area. And just as a way to better um connect some of the, like the hubs and centers of the city. So um and then I was, as I was looking at the bike plan map, I was surprised to see um. And this might not mean anything to you. This is more for staff. That eighty eighth and seventh avenue on West Hill is a high-stress area. Um and um it's, it's just surprising, like I, I live over there, I get it, I know why. Um but to see that it might, there might be a um. A reason to prioritize that area um was a surprise to me um in reviewing the bike plan. So I, I don't disagree with the, the shared use bike path over the bridge. Think that's a great idea, but also wanted to just kind of expand the, the thought to other areas that I think might be beneficial to our, our community. Um specifically around the colleges and um across the county line over on West Hill. The other um edits, I think, make a lot of sense. I was glad to see the annexation um statement in there around um prioritizing. Urban areas or suburban areas that um would not then um impede into rural lands. Uh I think that's an important piece to include. Um and I would look forward to see what, you know, what those policy proposals that might match that would look like. And, and like Councilmember Dodd said around the um, the human trafficking piece. It, it is definitely a concern and it's finding, you know, I, I'd love to know what some of the specific policies are. Um around that, if, if anybody's brought anything forward um to the state. But, you know, it's not a conversation that we've had here locally at what we could do as a, as a council to respond. But I, I am open to hearing what the, what can be done at the state level. Yeah, other than that, I really just appreciate how well put together this is and, and how um. How ready we are to make um amendments to it so that we can move forward into the next session, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi Shelley. Thank you. Thank you again for the, see, the camera is wrong again. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know where it is. I want, I wanted to first thank you for all the work. I actually am looking forward to uh getting to the session. It's just going to be a short one. And your weekly updates are, oh, here I am, I can see myself. The weekly updates, um uh look forward to those very informative. In the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that you have ideas of how, or I, I heard, that's what I heard, how you think the session might go. Do, can you provide, shed some light on your thoughts on the session and what might and might not move forward?
Yeah, so I think this, the supplemental session is going to be, or the, this, the. Short session is going to be focused on the supplemental operating budget. I think that's going to take up. The vast majority of legislators' time and, and energy. Um legislators are already being told that if they have ideas of bills that are going to cost the state, don't bother. They're not going to be, they, they're being discouraged from being introduced. And chairs of committees are being encouraged to not hold public hearings on bills that have a fiscal note attached. Um so it's, I think it's, it's going to be a difficult session for the legislature because they're going to be primarily looking at ways to cut, cut costs. I mentioned the, the nine hundred million dollar uh deficit over the next four years. That does not take into account any um federal funding cuts or of the, the programs that have been. Federal funding cut doesn't take into consideration the state backfilling any of that. Um so there, they'll need to um. It, it's going to be a difficult session. I think the short answer is the budget. That's what's going to be the focus of the short session. And policies that reduce costs. So on the housing front. There's not necessarily going to be significant new investment in housing. They're going to be looking at ways, how do we cut costs? For folks who are going to be building housing.
Uh thank you. This is, uh, this is helpful. So in the following year and, and the, there may be the, even the next bi, so the next biennium, they're going to be discussing, they'll be discussing this biennium and, and so on and so forth. Like how are we? No, number one, are we, are any of the things that we have, we prioritize for our city? Do they have costs associated with them and hence they'll be unlikely to get implemented at the state level? And then number two is uh housing, we have those mandates for housing. That require, that are going to be very difficult for the many local jurisdictions just to implement on their own. There has to be some state help. Resource-wise as well. Is that ever going to happen uh in the foreseeable future?
Those are the golden questions. Um I'm going to start with um the last one. Are there going to be resources to help jurisdictions a, achieve the targets that the state has set? The, the vision is yes. In reality, I think it's yet to be seen. The, the. The state doesn't have the resources to achieve the, the housing targets that we need. And so there's, that's why there's a lot of discussion about how do we, how do we change the tax structure in order to. Find sufficient revenue to make the investments that um, that the legislature would like to, specifically around housing. Um and the, the, the two-pronged approach is how do we reduce the cost of housing? How do we achieve this without every housing project costing more? Um and that has, I, I'll just be candid, that's historically been a more Republican uh stance. And that's becoming more and more common um on the other side of the aisle, recognition that we will not achieve our housing targets unless we are finding ways to reduce costs. To answer the first question about the city's priorities and, and just budget realities. The, the request around Shelton View at this stage is a, is a request around um trying to find a way to. Quantify what Shelton View is worth in order to know what amount we're aiming for if the city is going to acquire it. The target is not necessarily acquisition. The target is preservation. So it doesn't necessarily have to cost um the city or the state an amount. Um if there is a way to find preservation by the, the property remaining within D N R. Um that may not, that may not cost the state anything. If it is about um it being acquired. That would touch the state's capital budget, and so it wouldn't be, uh, we wouldn't be trying to draw money down from the budget that has the most constraints on it. The uh multimodal connections is connected to the transportation budget. Transportation budget funding is. It's the only budget where the revenue is forecasted to be spent before it comes in. So the state has adopted, and every time they adopt a new revenue package, they also schedule out how they're going to spend that money over the next. Eight biennium, and so the, when money doesn't come in as expected, they're already in the hole. Makes it really difficult to make significant new investments, like we're, like we're pursuing in a, a. Bike, citywide bike plan. bike, citywide bike plan. So really the way that this type of policy is going to be advanced is if there is a, a new revenue proposal um, that the state makes as a way to advance, um, new projects. And that happens every, I would say, five to six years. Um, the state makes a really concerted effort at looking for new revenue to fund, uh, new transportation needs. The, um, removing barriers to housing, again, it's kind of twofold. It could be both new investment as well as cost savings that would be correlated to both the state's operating and capital budget. Um, and then the multimodal, the Bothell Way multimodal project is, is connected to the transportation budget. And that's about protecting the resources they've already allocated to us, um, as well as looking for funding into the, into the future.
Uh, listening to you talk about how the state budget works, and then I can see our finance department over here cringing at how you can't ba- balance the budget. It's like you're spending the money before you even earn it. Like, how does that even work? Um, yeah. So that, when you say cost for housing, what does that mean, uh, reducing cost? Like, what kind of cost?
Um, one of the major costs of a, an affordable housing project is the land. So land acquisition, you can't really do much about that. Another is materials, another is labor, um, another is permitting. Those are, there's not a lot of areas to cut costs, which is why we see a lot of ideas proposed on permitting. Um, you can't change the value of a land, you can't really manipulate the market to change the cost of the product. And everyone knows labor is expensive. So we end up with permitting being the area where they want to cut costs.
And Shelley, um, just to jump in real quick to Deputy Mayor, when we went to Olympia to the Lieutenant Governor's office in August is when, um, there was a proposal at the end, as you'll recall, and I think we shared with council um, that was floated about a potential pilot. So the city did receive some questions about some potential regulatory areas to explore, uh, which we submitted back to the governor's office on Monday, uh, with some feedback on, um, on those ideas, plus a few others that, that are on our radar. Um, and then we're going to continue to monitor, uh, basically the thesis of that was looking for communities that might wish to pilot some solutions where then again, developers in affordable housing and market housing and the city all open our books and share, here's what it costs, here's the true cost, and then see if there is something to extrapolate. So we're going to continue monitoring that and keeping our hand, um, halfway raised so we can eagerly raise it all the way up or put it in our pocket if it looks like it's not appropriate. But that'll be something that we'll bring back. Yeah, exactly. It's the smooth move, man. Uh, we will definitely, uh, be bringing back more information for council once those details do finally come. I think we had heard three to four weeks away and we are, we've doubled that and, um, but, but we're, we're waiting.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you, Shelley.
Can I pop in here quickly? Shelley, um, it's good to see you again. Um, one of my favorite people on the Olympia part of the planet. So, um, I saw that it's on page two hundred and two when we were talking about removing barriers to housing construction. Um, this is a little bit of a rabbit trail, so I, I'm, I'm going to apologize. But I think that it will end up impacting, um, jobs and vitality and, uh, construction. Um, I, I appreciate the, uh, sentence that says, "Could include but not limited to expanding apprenticeships or returnships for construction trades." And though we do not have a school here that, within Bothell proper, we do have one neighboring that does support trades. And just as an anecdote, I have, one of my sons does HVAC. He, uh, one of the reasons why he left the state is that the, this state is very, very highly regulated on the next job skill that you can get as far as sellability in advancing your own, um, professionalism. So he moved to another state which, uh, has much more lax labor laws than Washington State does, which gives his mother a great deal of pause. But I think there is something to be said. He has said, he has learned the skills now in this other state that is sellable for other par- uh, you know, other states. He could come back into this state. And so Washington State on one level is shooting its in, itself in the foot by having really tough, um, rigorous, uh, certification that could be more, when you talk about it, could be acquired in apprenticeships. It's what's the language that is in here. And I can't help but think that that has an impact, that if we make it easier for people to advance in trades and build their skills, then we've boosted our job inventory and the next generation that's coming along. You know, we hear, uh, electricians are going to be a premium because so many are retiring out of the profession. So, um, when we talk about reducing housing costs, I think if there's something that comes in Olympia that is talking about making it easier to do, to be better and advance in a trade as a city, I would hope that we would support that because I think that would help benefiting, benefit both what we want to do in the city and the people who live in the city. But, but this is great. I really have appreciated all the pieces that have gone into this and the work and thoughtfulness that you and the staff has done here. I just wanted just to add that one little tidbit of how can we, can encourage trades?
Thank you.
I'll just jump in and say, when Councilmember Kurt earlier was talking about how he appreciated how staff had been making notes of the random things that we had brought up over the course of the year. I felt like reading through this the first time, I was like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, yeah, we talked about that, didn't we? And it, I just want to, I want to reiterate, um, that I felt the same way reading through it and, um, and thank them. Um, Shelley, thank you too. I don't have any other questions. Um, uh, hi, you're back there, but I'm going to go that way because that's where the, the camera is. Um, but appreciate you, good to see you, and, um, appreciate some of the clarification you've already given us in your presentation.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Shelley, one last thing that I wanted to, um, reiterate. I'm glad that we, um, captured, um, changes to our annexation, um, policy, uh, in the policy manual on page two or page two oh five of the packet. Um, and this kind of came forward because I'm sure that you've been briefed on it. I'm sure you've read our sternly worded letter that went out into the ether. But I wanted to just reiterate a couple of things because some of the language in this, it's necessarily broad, um, so that it can be flexible to support. Uh, I, I understand why it needs to be broad in this context. But, um, I, speaking for myself and a little bit for the, the group of, uh, Snohomies who wrote the letter, um, we were really intensely worried that, um, UGA expansion in complete control of counties could be weaponized against cities, um, in the future because, um, it's not, it's not by necessity a partnership, uh, and like a collaborative decision that comes forward. It's sort of like top-down. Um, and so when we say here that, um, the city believes that annexation and growth management law should encourage the logical development of existing urban areas, yes. Um, and right sizing of city boundaries to reduce urban sprawl, sure. And support sustainable growth. I think that, um, um, yeah, we're not necessarily looking to, uh, contract the city as much as, um, imposing, uh, a little bit more regulation on and, and limitations on the ability for the counties, any county, to, um, to extend or expand, um, um, urban growth areas without, uh, the collaboration, the partnership and the buy-in from the cities who are going to be saddled with that growth. Um, and so, um, when we say here at the last sentence that the city supports legislation that makes it easier and less costly to adjust or contract the urban growth boundaries, I don't know if you've, you would know, but I don't think that we've ever really seen a contraction of the urban growth boundary. And I'm worried that putting the word, or the verbiage, adjustment means that, oh, they can cut it from, like in Chelan County. Maybe they can cut it from, uh, uh, Chelan area and put it in Malaga. Or, you know, like, we don't want counties to be making those, um, adjustment decisions, um, in a black box. We want it to be in partnership with the cities that it will be affected, that will be affected. And so that was one of the really like egregious things that we got, um, angry about. And I think that, um, um, like, just putting the word adjust or contract urban growth boundaries in there might not, um, get at the like, um, salient point of like, we want to be part of that conversation. And then also, um, uh, we, I think that we're still committed because we have it in our, uh, comprehensive plan. I think that we as a council are still committed to opposing, um, the expansion of urban growth areas, um, across the state. Um, because we, and it's, it's linked to that first part of the statement there that, um, we, that the law should encourage logical development in existing urban areas rather than sprawl. Um, but I think that adjustment, um, of those areas could get a little sensitive. Um, and so, um, I, I don't know if it necessarily needs any verbiage change here in the policy manual, but I just wanted to give a little bit more context for that so that when and if we do see bills being brought forward, um, you know, kind of the intent that we have, um, with wanting to be a, like an active participant with the county, we want to be, that's a shared interest and we belong at that table when those conversations are happening. So I hope that makes sense. And that was kind of long-winded, but I, I wanted to add a little bit more of a finer point on that annexation, uh, bit. And I welcome other Snohomies to lean in.
Yes.
So Shelley, I did capture some notes on that and we'll, um, send them back to you and potentially an edit to, to add clarification for that. Because again, it'll be, it's a short session, but it can be really long when there's three thousand bills. So we'll make sure that we have the right roadmap. Shelley, I was wondering though too, and not to put you on the spot, but interestingly enough, within like a week or two of when the Bothell City Council was having that conversation about Snohomish County, I know the House Local Government Committee was having a conversation about annexation. Is there anything that you have been seeing as tracking related to annexation? And, uh, in terms of bills that came out of that committee meeting that you could maybe give a, a few details on?
Yeah, so there, the House Local Government Committee had a work session on annexation and there was some discussion among legislators on, um, wanting to introduce bills as a result of that work session. I have not seen any, any bill drafts or anyone actually specifically say they're planning to introduce a bill. Um, but that is a, a topic that I anticipate will be, um, coming forward in twenty twenty-six. And I, I just appreciate the feedback, uh, Councilmember Kurt and Dodd because that, it's the exact reason that we're having this study session this evening is to make sure that the, the language that is developed based on the previous conversations captures the position of council. And so I, I think it's very important for us to, like, words matter. So we'll, um, update that last sentence to better reflect the feedback that you shared this evening.
Thanks.
I think that might be it. So Shelley, thank you. I'm going to go like this because it feels weird to wave the opposite direction that you are on the screen. Um, and, um, I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, is now a good time for a break before our last two study sessions? All right. Yeah, it is seven fifty-eight. We'll be back at eight fifteen. All right, next up, we have a transportation impact fee update study session. Oh, yeah, and I guess we're sharing.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so our second study session, yeah, is one, a topic that has been before you before, but staff is bringing back some additional information. And there will really be, um, two areas of the conversation. You'll be seeing a focus around, uh, a proposed, um, lower or higher transportation impact fee reduction for affordable housing. But then also, uh, impact fee exemption for minor development change in use. Those are both the, the topics of the day. Uh, and so to lead us through that conversation, I'm going to turn things over to Boyd. Am I coming directly to you, I think? Oh, no, Director Lenhart, are you going to skip us off? All right, great, to frame it, because it does take a village. We have, uh,
It does.
Quite a team tonight.
Yes. Uh, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Uh, here this evening, um, wanted to first start by thanking you for the excellent feedback that, uh, you provided staff back in July. Um, and I, before I turn it over to Boyd, I just wanted to say that I feel like we've, um, we've hit some of the, the high points that you were looking for. So, um, hoping to get your feedback on, uh, the proposal this evening. And I will hand it over to Boyd.
Thank you, Director Lenhart. Good evening. And with us tonight, we also have Deputy Public Works Director Steve Morikawa and Kendra Breland, Principal of Fair and Pierce, a consulting firm that assists us with transportation needs. Uh, so we'll be presenting proposed transportation impact fee schedule alternatives. And this is, this whole approach is to implement the multimodal level of service that was adopted as part of the twenty twenty-four comp plan. And the goal of this update is to make sure that, one, we mitigate impacts from growth. And, two, we collect appropriate funding to do those projects that is fair, equitable and defensible. Um, the results you'll see tonight, uh, we're not seeing a large, uh, big change as proposed from what's currently charged. Um, in completion of these projects is really important. Not only to mitigate the impacts from growth, but also to, uh, implement council's vision of safe, non-motorist transit, bike lanes, all these things that people want to live in Bothell for. And so we'll be presenting that. And, oops. Uh, we're requesting, uh, direction about the affordability reduction and the change in use exemption tonight. So for the key decisions, uh, should Bothell implement a lower or higher transportation impact fee reduction for affordable housing? And once again, this is de-restricted housing that we've discussed before. Um, and the second, uh, decision point we'd request from council would, uh, Bothell implement a proposed transition, uh, transportation impact exemption for minor development change in use. And we'll talk more about this, but this is more of taking the existing structure, changing the use, um, as opposed to demolishing a, a structure and intensifying that use. So I'll walk you through this. Um, for the timeline, we've had, uh, a council study session, session to planning commission study sessions. Uh, during the July one council study session, we were asked to bring back some additional information. One of the items that was requested is what if transportation impact fees paid for? And we have an attachment on the agenda bill. I can, I hope you can see that those fees, at least the portion that's, uh, of those projects that are being paid by those fees are resulting in some serious improvements to the city transportation system and mitigating growth and providing capacity. Um, the request was about the legal basis. Uh, uh, City Legal has followed up on that. The change in use exemption, you brought that forward strongly and it's being proposed. And then you also asked for alternatives. We're presenting those, um, for the transit, uh, rapid transit, regional growth area, um, proposal. You requested to expand that area, simplify that area and make sure that it encompasses the growth centers. Uh, the planning commission feedback supported all those options. Um, the recent planning commission, um, study session, they did, they did have unanimous approval for the higher affordability reduction for affordable housing. And they did have unanimous, uh, support for the, uh, change in use exemption. So with that, Kendra will speak a bit about transportation impact fees.
Great. Good evening, Council. Um, so I know we've been in front of you a few times before, so I'll keep this really brief. But just a reminder of transportation impact fees. First of all, um, they're kind of one-time charges paid by new development um, to, uh, you know, kind of assist in delivering projects that add capacity to your system. They're, they're not to be used for projects that are simply maintenance or just addressing existing deficiencies. Um, state laws evolved a lot in recent years, which is a great thing. Um, it now encompasses in terms of capacity adding projects that, that can include bike lanes, that can include sidewalks. A lot of those projects that are highlighted in your twenty twenty-four transportation element. So really exciting that there's a good synergy there. Um, these fees, uh, need to be outlined These fees need to be outlined in a defensible rate study, which creates that nexus between the impacts of development and the need for projects. And on the next slide, Boyd is really going to walk you through kind of that process of how we develop these rates. But a few other details just that are important to note. One, when you collect transportation impact fees, they do need to be spent within a 10-year period. So that can include actually spending them or encumbering them to projects. You should be updating your, your project list periodically as projects are added and removed. City last updated its project list for impact fees back in 2019. So Bothell's actually pretty, pretty good in terms of doing those updates. So you guys are doing a really good job on that. And projects need to be in your capital facilities plan. And that encompasses all those projects that are on your 2024 transportation element project list and your transportation improvement program. That'll, I think, pass it back to Boyd, right?
Thank you. And I actually skipped a side slide, but I think I discussed each of these options. So hopefully, the key other takeaway is ensure sufficient revenue to actually construct the projects to mitigate impacts in the future. So fee calculation, once again, to us, this is a relatively simple approach. We develop a project list and that was based on the 2024 comprehensive plan. We identified 24 projects that have a portion that can be attributed to growth. We identify the portion of that project in dollars, well, percent, and then dollars that are attributed to capacity increases to accommodate growth. And that's identifying the growth share. So of that $370 million total cost of projects, about 150, includes about 156 million in grants and $99 million in growth eligible costs. We discussed last time and we discussed in the agenda bill, the city of Bothell is including grants in our calculations. We don't, that's not a requirement. We could say that of that 370 million, we could look at the, the full share attributed to the city and to development. Instead, we've looked at the share of development and city costs once you take the grants out of the equation. So that results in lower impact fees. And part of this is understanding the total cost. The next is understanding the number of trips during the 12-year planning period. And the math up top is $99 million divided about 10,000 trips equals a $9,928 per person trip rate. And that, that base rate is used to estimate or to develop the fee schedule for each different type of land use. And once again, this is the cost before any reductions. So we'll be talking about those next. Yeah. And one other thing we'd like to stress, and we've said this before, is this is really looking at a snapshot in time. The growth estimates for the next 20 years are averaged over time. We don't know how fast it's going to come in. The projects are, are planned to mitigate that growth as it comes in. So if, if the growth occurs more slowly, the projects may be constructed more slowly because the dip comes in. And we'll be looking at these annually because we track the, the new trips and the expenses attributed and the revenue cost coming in for that. And then we also look at these about every five years. So we really want to stress that, you know, this is our best understanding at this time. Yes, sir?
What happened, there was 115 million, not the math?
Yeah, that's, that's, sorry, that's the city share. So, yeah, we're saying if there's 370, if you take 156 out of that, the 99 million is attributed to growth and the rest is a city share.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, that's what, okay.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, and it just, it's, it's, it's detailed a bit more in the agenda bill, I hope. It makes, yeah, but here is just kind of a snapshot. And it really does distress that if we take that 156 off the top, it ends up reducing.
I get it, I get it. I just wanted to make sure that nothing changed.
Yeah. And if, and I think the number we came up with is if you leave, if you take the grants out and you just say that it's all city and all development paying for this and no grant share, that increases the impact fee by about 80%, which is a huge increase. Okay.
Great. Thank you. So throughout this process, we've received strong direct policy direction from both Planning Commission and from this council to really look at reductions that are reasonable, that account for the benefits of developing in more transit served areas. So as such, we've created a reduction area that is based on areas that are within quarter-mile walk shed of frequent transit stops and your designated growth centers. So this is similar, the map that you can see on the screen is similar to what we've presented before, but it's been simplified and expanded a bit. For development in these areas, we're recommending a 10% reduction in impact fee rates in recognition that travel in these areas are less impactful. So trips are being made less by car, more on foot, more by transit. Trips tend to be shorter. Approximately 60% of the citywide development that we anticipate to see over the next 12 years actually occur in these areas. As such, it would result in a slight reduction in the impact fees that you could generate. But again, this recognizes that development in these areas have fewer impacts. And so it's reasonable to be encouraging them through a lower impact fee. And yes, I will stay. I didn't know if I needed to get over to you, Boyd. No, all good. So this slide shows Bothell's current impact fee for a single-family home compared to some of your peer jurisdictions. So just to orient you a little bit to the slide. Black bars obviously are other jurisdictions. And then we've got three in the middle that are Bothell. So you can see, first one up top, 2025 citywide rate, that is what you charge to a single-family home today. And then based on our newer calculations, the 2026 citywide rate is what areas outside of those reduction zones would pay. So you can see it's a slight increase over your current impact fee. But within those reduction areas, you can actually see that the 2026 rate would be slightly lower than what you're charging today. So if we can go to the next slide, just wanted to also share that information for multifamily homes, again, the same orientation there. One thing I will note is that Bothell is already kind of, you know, you might notice that, hey, our, our multifamily rates tend to be a little lower than our peer jurisdictions. Bothell already incorporates fairly low trip generation rates for multifamily development. So very encouraging of that type of development in this community.
Thank you, Kendra. And these values that you see on the black bars are $2024. What you're seeing for the 2026 is actual dollars. So this does not, this does not incorporate increases from other cities. So what, in the future, when we show this slide again, I think you'll see that the black bars are slightly larger compared to the yellow bars. Okay, affordable housing and the lower reduction value. So council asked for alternatives and these are the alternatives we're presenting. Once again, this is deed restricted affordable housing. And what we're looking at is the average monthly income values. And just to speak on that a bit, this is the King County, Snow County AMI. And it's published annually by HUD and other sources, but we typically look at HUD. And it gives the range of, for each of the percent categories based on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or more dwell, persons per dwelling. So it's, it's kind of set. So the lower reduction is what you see is a 10% for 50% to 80% AMI, 30 for 30 to 50, and a 50% reduction if you're less than 30% AMI. We added the multifamily tax exemption, that's state law, that if you claim that, you get a 50% reduction in transportation impact fees. We wanted to make that really clear that we're accommodating that. This results, if, with a lower affordability approach, it results in another 9.6 million in reduced fees. With that said, though, that looking at our capital program, staff is comfortable with the remaining 83 and a half million to complete the, the work that's planned for this 12-year period. Okay, and now for the higher reduction. This just has higher reduction factors. And when you think about the reductions, it's not a separate fee table. It's a, it's a footnote that's added to the, the fee table. And it says, if you have deed restricted affordability in these range, these are the reductions you expect to see. And that's 20% for 50, 80, 50 for 30 to 50, and the MFTE, an 80% reduction, which is the max allowed by state law without paying back some of that, that revenue from other sources. This, this has additional revenue burdens. It's 15.8. But once again, the remaining $80 million, staff is comfortable with bringing that forward with revenue to complete these projects. Okay, and we were asked for some comparisons to understand what this means for different land uses. So we're looking at multifamily attached. And this just kind of shows the, the magnitude of these reductions. So when you think of impact fees, you quite often hear that the fees and the rest are what's, what's hindering development. Well, this is a portion of development. It's not a huge portion of development. But the way we like to look at this is every little bit counts. So when you look at both of these, if you're looking at both reductions, the, the higher reduction, it, it really does provide a significant benefit to promote the most valuable, the lowest AMI affordable housing. And the portion of the parentheses is, is the additional 10% reduction if you're within that quarter-mile rapid transit growth center area. So I kind of wanted to pause here. The next slide just shows comparisons with stack multifamily. And to kind of give you a bit more before we discuss this or if you have questions. When you look at this, we really like to classify these as, as almost different type of ownership, of different type of, of how these projects are, could be owned. So what you're seeing here, duplexes and attached townhomes, that's foundation to rooftop, single, it's one dwelling that extends from foundation to rooftop. That means it can be subdivided in the future. It could be fold, it could be sold fee simple. It could be a condominium, it could be apartment. But one of the goals that we believe we've been tasked with is to provide more housing options. So I, I really want to stress that. When you get to the next one and you start thinking about condominiums and apartments, you, you can't segregate those. I just, I just wanted, that's what the yellow lines are for, just to reinforce that this type of product, which we're seeing more and more of, can be subdivided fee simple, condominiumized or apartment. Questions about the comparisons?
I had a question on that. I was just trying to beat out the mayor before I forgot my question. So sorry if I talked over you there, Boyd. Can we, I'm, this side chatter is distracting. I was wondering if we have flexibility to offer different levels of reduction, whether it will be owned or rented?
That's a very good question. So someone else might answer this differently, but when we look at impact fees, it's the impact. So it's, it's kind of hard to differentiate between something like this that could be owned or rented or condominiumized and say they have different impacts. So we want to make this equitable, we want to make it defensible. So it's, it's a really good question. It just would be, I think, harder to justify.
It's a fee on the impact, not who is buying it or renting it or whether they're buying or renting it.
Yes.
So similar question, probably a similar answer. Do we have the ability with some of these reductions, when we're not talking about subsidized affordable housing, to offer like the 10% near transit if the home sells for less than the median home price? If it's a more naturally affordable unit or not?
So I'm going to take a shot at that and then I'm going to ask Kendra or Steve to chime in. I think what you're saying is if for some reason a home sells less than the average price.
Like, I don't necessarily think it's, it's a prudent use of our limited financial resources to offer a 10% reduction to a $2 million home because it's near a bus. But near a $550,000 home, hey, that's cheaper than the median home price. But I don't know if we have that leeway under the law.
So what we're looking at for the affordability reduction is deed restricted. So we know.
Right, this is market rate purely.
Yeah, gotcha. So, and I'm.
This question.
No, no, I got you. So homes can be remodeled and improved and the rest. So once again, it kind of goes back to the impact and the fact that we have the ability to reduce fees for affordable housing under state law. I hear what you're saying as well. A $2 million home within that quarter-mile walk shed or the quarter-mile rapid transit, you may want to incentivize more $500,000 homes elsewhere. And I think what we'd say is, we understand, but if you deed restrict something, we have the right and the ability to reduce the cost. And we can justify reducing the impact fee by that 10% if you're, has, have less of a burden irrespective of the cost of the home. So I'm, I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but Kendra, do you want to?
Well, I just want to make sure we're clear about when impact fees are, are paid. They're assessed at the building permit. So again, like, for example, is, I just want to make sure it's clear for folks that, you know, if I live in a home and then I sell the home, the impact fee isn't charged again because it's essentially having the same impact. We're not adding by new family moving in or moving out. To the extent that, for a property, and again, impact fees are charged more than just residential, it's charged to all types of development. So to the extent that a business or a property is adding trip generating uses to their property, that can include a business transitioning from something that was fairly low trip generating and turning into something that's fairly high trip generating, that the city would charge an impact fee for the additional impact. I think your question is just for different costs of, for example, single-family homes in general, we're usually not seeing a difference on the impact fee rate. I think what the city is proposing to do is, you know, I understand the proposal. One, if you're within that, you know, kind of the area where we think you're going to have lower impacts, we're, we're proposing is 10% reduction. And then state law is fairly specific about where you can provide reductions without having to pay back. And so I think city staff is being very careful to stay within those parameters. I hope that helps to answer your question.
It does. And I, I understand that an impact fee, the cost of the housing does not necessarily affect the transportation impact. Simply just trying to find all mechanisms to encourage more affordable homes. But yeah, I appreciate it. I had to, I had to try.
I'm not racing anybody. I would actually argue that less expensive housing does have less of a transportation impact. Because if you look at car ownership for people in 30% and below AMI housing, it is very low because if you make 30% of the area median income, there's not a lot of money left over for a car. But I just have a couple of quick questions. First one is, within a quarter-mile walk shed of a rapid transit stop, I would not like to incentivize single-family homes. I would like more people to live there. So like, can we not reduce the impact fee for single-family homes within that walk shed?
This is a policy call for the city?
Cool. I was just like, is that an allowable use was my question?
Actually, not to provide, yes. So I've worked with the city of Portland and I don't think their jurisdiction, the, the legality around that is any different than Oregon is here. You can specify what types of uses are eligible to receive the 10% reduction. So for example, in the city of Shoreline, so a little, little more proximate neighbor, they do have, you know, similar reduction areas where they're providing reduced fee. But four, they actually have specified certain uses, more auto-oriented uses that aren't eligible for that. I do know the city of Portland, they had those same, similar, more auto-oriented uses, but they also did include single-family as another use that wasn't eligible for that rate. So that's, again, a policy call. I'm, I'm not here to advise on whether you want to go one direction versus the other. I would say also, just to your previous comment on small, you know, cheaper housing having fewer impacts, the transportation professional, profession is working to get data to substantiate that. I, I do concur with you professionally on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you, because you are the professional and I am the one that is figuring this out as I'm going. The, the other question I had is, you know, when we look at these kind of reductions, we're looking at ways to incentivize the things that we want and try to get more of the development that we want. And is a 10% discount going to do anything? Like, is that going to change anybody's decision about any of this?
So, so it's something we can, we can put in the toolbox. We heard, we heard from council that you want to see more dense growth within these areas. And it, it's kind of similar to the middle housing regulations that say we want to try to get this, you know, housing within these areas. So, but I, I want to reiterate what Kendra said, that we don't get challenged on reductions. We get challenged on fairness, equity and the rest. So if, if council within this 10% reduction area, which now applies to anything, would want to say that's, that's only for certain type of housing units. I don't think that's something that would be an issue. Kendra? Yeah?
Yeah.
It's a policy que, it's a policy question. You're trying to incentivize. You're trying to incentivize that without, and you can still demonstrate that there's less intense use.
Yeah, no, I get that. I guess the question I asked was like, is a, I mean, I get, I don't know if this is a question you're gonna have an answer to, but it just like, I don't see how a 10% reduction in an impact fee that's already a pretty small percentage of the overall development cost is gonna change anybody's calculus or mind on whether or not they're gonna build it. So it, like, I just kinda wonder, what's the point?
Well, I'll speak here. The 10% was substantiated with some modeling and some math. So you've got some numbers behind it. It was a reduction that we could provide to incentivize. So you can absolutely choose not to offer that. But this was an amount that we felt like the city could provide and not have to, you know, repay because this was a lesser impact we were able to, you know, kinda quantify.
Kind of a thing, okay. I mean, I'm totally fine with it. I just, it doesn't seem like a lot. And I would, to my colleagues, make the policy suggestion that I would not like to incentivize single-family homes in a quarter-mile of walk shed of transit with a lower impact fee.
I'll raise you that. And also, how about not incentivizing drive-through commercial properties or auto-oriented businesses within a quarter-mile of transit?
Hundred percent, yes.
That's a ridiculous thing that we should not be incentivizing.
Do we also wanna bring up storage facilities and that too?
I mean, sure. Yes.
So to simplify this, I'm hearing what you're saying. I mean, 10% isn't a lot. You may wanna consider two options, whether you just scrap this because you're, you have two options here with a lower and higher reduction for affordable housing, which sounds like it's a council priority. And I'm just, I'm not, and then, and then we're, we talking about the change of use exemption as well. And so that's one option that you may wanna consider. The other option is to just restrict it to the multifamily housing types. And it won't, as you can see, it doesn't really change the numbers that much. So it's, it's, it is a little bit more complexity. We tried to simplify it as much as possible. Once again, it's going right down right away lines. So it, it's not a lot of benefit. So you could also consider just not implementing this.
I would like to do the higher level of reductions for affordable housing also.
I am almost wondering, and maybe I'm just feeling too creative, so maybe everybody's not for this, but curious about doing just 20% for 50 to 80% AMI affordable housing and then 50% for less than 50% AMI affordable housing, so kind of a combo. I also support both what the mayor said about the 10% within the transit quarter-mile should be for multifamily only. That's, we should try to get as many units as possible walkable to transit, especially thinking about people who find it hard to get parking in units near there. Like, we should kind of create cohesion there. And then also, council member Kurt's comment, the 10% should not apply to businesses that are primarily drive-through, where they're car-oriented or storage too 'cause you're not like taking your cargo bike to your storage unit very often, unless I'm totally wrong on that, but I haven't heard of it, so.
Can I ask a question? It's a question. I don't know, earlier we heard a comment from a business owner who wants to, does any of this apply to that, you're gonna get there? Oh, okay, okay, okay. So I was setting you up for that.
Yeah, it is, and I even took notes to make sure I addressed each item on this. But this is just to show you, once again, this is, this is a product where it's, it's not a single dwelling unit extending from foundation to rooftop. And it's, this is important for utilities as well, where you'd see it be apartments or condominiums. And once again, these fees are relatively lower than the attached version and you can see the discounts. And I'll say again, if you add that 10%, it helps a bit, but it's not a lot. Boy, I see a math error.
When you're calculating these affordability levels, is that for the units of affordability get that rate and then the units that are full market don't get that rate? So it's a big math calculation. Like, if we impose a quarter of the units must be 50% of area median income, then only a quarter of the unit would pay that 10% reduction and then the 75, so it's not actually that much.
Yeah, so it's for deed restricted units because we really wanna promote that so we can provide more housing options.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, yes ma'am, I really don't like that table now.
Before we go on, I'd love to ask, was there any modeling done to waive impact fees on anything below 30%?
We did not model that. And this is something that if council chooses to look at in the future, it's a good thing to look at. But the remaining 20% would have to be paid back by other funds. And to us, that's a bigger conversation because that's typically the general fund, which funds lots of different programs within the city.
City services.
City services, yeah. So it's something that at this time, without that being planned out, I mean, it's definitely something we've looked at in the future, but without it being planned out, it's a difficult ask to bring forward. So we've maxed it out at the 80%. And it really does remove most of the cost from impact fees.
For that development, if the whole thing is, you know, zero to 30% AMI or those units that are deed restricted at 30%, at less than 30% AMI, okay. You know, I will put it out there about waiving for the lower income levels of developments, but I would, you know, would want to hear what my colleagues think about that too. And also have the data to back it up, like, 'cause if you haven't done the modeling, then we don't necessarily know what the impacts would be.
Yeah, all these costs are estimated.
Yes.
We haven't seen a lot of affordable housing come in yet, so it's all estimated. So if we do the math, you might see that it's a larger number. What I can say, and I haven't discussed this with anyone else in this group, but it's not bad, is what we are proposing for utility connection charges for the CHIP program, you may have heard about that, connecting housing infrastructure program, is adding language in there. If funding should be obtained from other sources in an equal amount as to what's being waived, then there's a process to take care of that. So if for some reason, that last 20%, if funding was found somewhere, it could be the city, it could be something like the CHIP program or something like that, then the city could receive those funds to offset the last final 20% reduction. So we can't just waive it. We have to find supplemental revenue for it. And that's, that's a very simple sentence to add. And it would give council and the city flexibility should those options arise in the future.
Looking at Director Lenhart for feedback on that. And it, like, do you want, is there anything you would wanna say to that? Okay.
I think maybe, let's keep, let's keep moving through because we're starting to now get off of the topic that we're here for tonight.
Yeah, and I shouldn't have sprung that, sorry. So the next one is the change of use exemption. And we, we heard from council directly that this is a priority. We had unanimous plan and commission report for this. This would apply for change use requests such as in downtown where an existing building's being reused. This is not to apply for demolishing a building and building something else. We're modeling this language after the city of Kirkland. And it's, it's, it's pretty specific. This isn't for additional area and this and that. This is, I'm gonna take an existing building, I'm gonna change the use and, and the fee is exempt. This also would apply to neighborhood scale residential and are really keen on this. So if someone has, they wanna convert their garage into a green grocer or something else like that, it would, it would, it would make it so that we don't apply those fees at that time. We haven't seen any of these uses really. You heard from a gentleman this, early this evening about some costs. The way we've estimated this additional 1.6 million is in the last eight years, we've seen two requests, two requests for change of use exemption for downtown. And that happens to be a furniture store and a, and a building that might turn into medical restaurant. And we're just estimating that 3,000, 300,000 for each of those. And then what we did is we haven't seen any of the neighborhood scale grocer, but we're estimating one every two years. Hopefully it's more. And then we've estimated that as a small amount as well, that's that change. So we think this hopefully addresses council's desire to promote this type of use. And I think we can demonstrate that the financial impact is relatively low. And with that said, for, for all these combined, city staff is comfortable with 75.8 to 81.9 million in revenue to complete the work within the 12 years, either with the higher affordability reduction and the change in use or with not. So Title 17 updates, you haven't seen these yet. But as part of our Title 17, it describes how we collect impact fees and how we measure concurrency. Currently, it's vehicle trips. It has to change to multimodal. It includes process simplification. We have many, many, many paragraphs on how to do this and we're trying to model ours on something much simpler. Includes my housekeeping text updates. And most importantly, it would include the new fee table with the notes at the end that provide for reductions upon council decision. Okay, next steps. As we, as we planned at this time, it may not, it may change, but a public hearing on the proposed impact fees, council's consideration in December and adoption prior to January 1, 2026. The January 1, 2026 is a goal. If council had additional deliberation on these, if there was more discussion, this could push back, we'd like to get it into effect as soon as possible. So with that said, we're requesting some direction on both the affordability reduction and change of use. And these are the two questions. And once again, if there's different direction on the quarter-mile transit and regional growth centers, that's very easy to address at this time.
I think the change of use answered my question. I feel like it's gonna solve. I know, I understand that we don't have, we didn't have many examples in the past, but I suspect now that this is an available option and we advertise it, it might, you know, get some, some more interest. But we're gonna have to test this hypothesis, right? So.
I'm a yes on the change of use and I would go for higher reductions for affordable housing.
I'd like to ask why it's allowable and suggested to exempt impact fees for change of use, but not exempt deeply affordable housing? And am I comparing apples to oranges? But I, like, as a, as a council, as a community, we know that we need to prioritize housing and we need to prioritize affordable housing. So why wouldn't we treat it the same as a commercial building?
So once it's, once again, it's to impact and this will be documented in the final report. But something like reduced impacts because you're within a quarter-mile of transit or you're using the same shell of the building, you're not expanding and you're expecting similar trip growth, you know, trip generation because of downtown, everyone's already walking by it. We can, we can, that's the technical part, the quantification, that's one thing. If someone says, I'm gonna build a 1,000 or 2,000 square foot home and one's affordable and one's not, it's harder to say that one has less impact than the other. And that's where the, if, if you, if you, that's where you end up having to pay back. So you're looking at impacts. I think we can make the, we can, we can make the case that for both the quarter-mile and the change in use without change of the footprint and all this other good stuff is technically defensible for reductions or exemption. It's harder to make the case that I have two homes that are the same, in the same area, one's affordable and one's not, they both have the same impact. And so I think that's why we can't get that last 20% off the plate.
Boyd, is it, is it fair to say then that the comparison isn't commercial to housing, it's existing structure to new structure?
Yeah. Thank you.
In that vein of thinking, I remain skeptical that new deeply affordable housing is buildable and that if we're going to see 0 to 30%, it's likely going to be conversion of an existing hotel. And to that end, what would the impact fees be charged for an existing hotel that would be converted into deeply affordable housing?
That's a good question. So it's, we'd be consistent with previous or existing code where you basically look at the existing use and the proposed use and you look at the difference in trip generation. So if it was the same, it's a wash. If the affordable housing had higher, then you'd say it's generating more trips. But once again, there's a reduction for affordable housing. So we see this as a really good tool to get there. It's, it's not getting things to zero, but it's, it's there. I have an existing hotel and it generates 100 trips. I'm gonna put affordable housing in and it generates 200 trips. Well, that, that project should, if it wasn't affordable, should pay for an extra 100 trips. Oh, wait, it's 30% AMI and it gets an 80% reduction. Now it's paying zero additional fee. So we really do see it as a really good tool for situations like that.
Can I chime in there, just in terms of, and I don't have the answer because I haven't done that calculation, but I'm just thinking about the steps that you take towards the calculation. So yes, you'd look at essentially what would the impact fee have been charged for the prior use? So it's, it's a hotel use. Yes, it's based on the impacts, but it doesn't have this 80% reduction on it. If you're bringing in and you're replacing it to deeply, deeply affordable and it's at that full 80% reduction, I actually, I don't know. It might actually not result in an impact fee. So there is, you know, I'd say a reasonable chance, again, not having done the numbers, that that may end up netting out to not having an impact fee. So I think that's, that's a very good question. That's something we could, you know, certainly very quickly look at, a scenario of, and, and, you know, kind of provide that, that, that answer if that's of interest to council.
I think in weighing the difference between council member Dodd's proposal and the mayor's proposal, I think that would be really important information to know on that deeply affordable line, like, how much is it realistically changing? If we're not looking at creation from the ground up, but conversion for deeply affordable units. So I'm caught in between. But supportive of the other changes that I mentioned before.
So I apologize if this is going down a rabbit hole. But to council member Kurt's example of a hotel converting into housing, wouldn't that be exempt as an existing structure?
Yeah, I think it depends. And that's, part of it is, it's, we're saying minor changes. And it would depend on the extent of the, of the work. And what I'd say to this, and we can do this calculation, because I wrote it down to address this question, is we can say it's a 100-unit hotel, what's the impact fee for a room? And then look to see if that would be converted to condos and see what that delta would be. And then if it wasn't condos, it would be affordable housing and we can see what that is. So that's a really easy case for us to look at and give to you folks.
Okay, so we can stay tuned on that one?
Correct, yes ma'am.
What are neighboring cities doing for when hotels are being converted to rental units? Like, I know Kirkland, I think it's Sage Property Group bought one of their hotels and is converting it. Do they do a change of use fee or do they do like a housing impact fee? Do we know?
We'll have to follow up on that because quite often, these are, mine are staying from these and I haven't looked into this that hard, but these are, like, Arch Housing is going to buy a hotel and convert it to affordable housing. And that's, 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 yeah. So we can look into that.
Okay, I was just curious. And I, I am supportive of change of use and reduction for affordable housing. I, I think if it, if it makes an impact on affordable housing, I'm fine with going with the larger numbers. To the mayor's question about like the 10%, I had the same exact thought. He beat me to it. I was like, does that even make a difference? But if the larger numbers do make a difference, then I'm not opposed to that if it's within the walk shed. So thanks for the work on this. It's really, really good to see, especially the change of use. I think we've been talking about that for quite a long time and it's good to see it come up.
I already spoke on the, the housing base changes. And I'm, I'm honestly fine with whatever, like, whatever everybody else is good for, like, count me in. And I'm, I'm honestly fine with whatever, like, whatever everybody else is good for, like, count me in. With the caveat of not doing it for single family homes with the transit ten percent. And for change of use, like, yes, that it's really exciting. It's something before I was on council that I was like, what? And it's nice that we're working on this. So I'm just excited. So sign me up, except not me personally, because I'm not gonna make business, but it's great.
I don't have anything to add, except we've waited a, this is not, I'm not inadvertently trying to guilt staff. I just want to say we've waited a long time as a community for change of use. And I'm grateful to see it being addressed now, so thank you.
So city manager, I think we've we've heard some pretty strong consensus for the higher affordability and the change in use. Is it, is it okay to take a minute to understand direction on the ten percent? Because that, council brought up some very good points. That's gonna be very challenging to implement, whether you're on this side or that side of the line. It's not a huge benefit compared to the other, the reductions and the exemptions. So is that something we should get feedback before?
Yeah, that was, I mean, it's like you're reading my notes, because that's what I was gonna check on. No, no, I think that's, it's a great question, because I think, yes, change of use, we got it. I think there's a strong consensus around if we're doing anything around the quarter mile for for transit, multifamily is the the vision. And then, yeah, I do think the, what you had just mentioned, with the caveat to the, and if the public hearing is on the eighteenth of November, that our goal would be to try and have a scenario that we would show like an example of an existing structure being rededicated to zero to thirty percent deeply affordable housing. What would be the impact of the policy change? And maybe if that modeling shows something other than the sentiment that we're hearing tonight, maybe come up with an alternative that would get it to where there isn't an impact. But, yeah, if if there is any last words to impart on the ten percent on whether it's worth the effort or if it just confuses things, that'd be great.
I I would welcome a reality check on this. But in my mind, part of the reason for doing it is showing that we we are open to reasonable changes to the way we assess fees. Like, we're not saying we're getting rid of all fees, you know, free for all, because that doesn't help anyone who lives here or will live here. But I I want us to be able to show as a city that we we want the housing that our community needs and is asking for. So if it, I think I I need you as our, as our staff and consultant staff to tell us if it's gonna make a difference. But also, I hope that it signals that, like, we're willing to hear reasonable suggestions from people. So that's kind of my thought there, as long as it doesn't harm anything. But I do appreciate the mayor's point that, like, does it make a difference? Because, I mean, sometimes I buy coffee when I wouldn't because I'm gonna get ten percent off. Like, I don't know that that translates to building a home. But I I think just a little more info would be helpful if it's worked somewhere else or not, maybe.
I have a question. If a ten percent reduction is what the the math has given us that we can support, that we can defend, would there be a way to take the discount that we are no longer applying to the single family homes and add that to the multifamily homes to get a deeper discount, but the same defendable number overall?
Not, not super defensively.
Okay.
Yeah. So I I think that a policy decision to promote multifamily within this area and with that, with what you said, because it it does show the city is trying to take measures. And it would compound the the reduction for affordable housing even more. I think that would be very defensible. I think it'd be very challenging to defend, now we're gonna make someone else pay more. That's that's where you get challenged. But it's it's a really good question.
I think ten percent is probably the closest bus. I got Councilmember Aldrich to look up real fast on that one.
I like that metaphor.
That means I'm comfortable with ten percent, unless it's an administrative nightmare. That's like gonna be difficult to, you know, if if there's no other factor, I'm comfortable with it, even if I don't think it's gonna make a big difference, because it gets a little bit closer to where I'd like to be.
Yeah, I think I'm for the ten percent as well because foregoing six million dollars of revenue in order to affirm and encourage uses that are compatible with our vision over a twelve year period is worthwhile to me. So I think ten percent of the math works. I am in support. But I, it needs to be directly tied to our policy ideas, not just across the board. So with those same exclusions as before, yeah.
So, so what I hear you saying is only multifamily housing? So we can, like, not mince around about different commercial uses and that sort of thing? Yeah, I think that'd be more straightforward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, so much, appreciate it.
Thanks for all your work and effort in that area, so thank you.
All right. And next up, we have a, our last study session for the Climate Action Plan.
That's all right. We we share nicely. Yeah, thank you, council. So the Climate Action Plan has been moving forward now for a while. And tonight is the last anticipated stop before bringing this back for adoption, which would be at the end of November. So this is a great opportunity here, final feedback and how the plan is shaping up, and then capture any remaining questions. And if it sounds like we're we're close, then this will be the last stop. If not, we'll reassess. But that's, that's the the intention tonight. Cameron Colvin, our long range planner in community development, is here to lead you through. I hear a brisk twenty eight slides. So Cameron, go ahead.
Thank you for setting this up. So, yeah, I do know that we are getting late in the evening here. I did have some slides prepared, but much of which are a recap of some of what we covered back in July. So I can breeze through through those pretty quickly, so we have a good amount of time at the end for discussion and any clarifying questions. So just a brief recap. I'll skip through a couple of these slides and just focus on the key ones here. So the Climate Action Plan itself primarily focuses on mitigation or greenhouse gas reductions. And that was fairly intentional. One, to make sure that we met our Department of Commerce funding through the grant we received last year, which ended in June, as well as to set us up for success in terms of progress reporting starting in twenty twenty nine on our comprehensive plan work. And so really, this builds upon the new climate element in the comprehensive plan and sets up the framework for us to have a realistic way of tracking greenhouse gas emissions citywide and reductions within our jurisdiction. So development of the plan began at the beginning of this year. And so we've been working closely with community members, K four C and other regional partners, as well as technical experts to help inform this plan. Couple, I had a couple of recap slides here in terms of the findings of the community wide and municipal greenhouse gas inventories. Biggest takeaways from those are that the two largest sectors impacting both are mostly transportation and land use related and buildings and energy. And then between the two years that we now have greenhouse gas inventory data for, we saw a de, overall decrease of six percent, which largely has taken place within the energy sector, primarily associated with advancements in energy efficiency and new renewable energy programs. And then when we looked at city operations specifically, so this was our first time conducting our own municipal inventory. We found that in twenty three, twenty twenty three, we generated about two thousand one hundred and seventy six metric tons of CO2 equivalent, which represents about point four percent of community wide emissions overall, with the largest sources being employee commutes, being a big one, fleet vehicles, and then energy to power our various facilities. So in terms of emission reduction targets, we are recommending that we adopt similar targets to K four C with the main distinction being that we would use twenty nineteen as our baseline year to track progress, since that's the first year that we had available greenhouse gas, citywide greenhouse gas emissions data for. And I think I mentioned back in July, on this chart here, you can see that a large percent of the projected reductions are anticipated to result from existing state programs. And there's a smaller portion that will kind of have to be made up by local action from the city itself. So how do we plan to get there? The Climate Action Plan includes eighty three strategies and actions to reduce emissions across key sectors. It's organized into five different focus areas. So municipal operations, specifically focused on areas that we have direct control over. Citywide, the rest of the categories are citywide. So citywide, buildings and energy, transportation and land use, zero waste, and community action. And then within the plan itself, you'll find a fairly detailed implementation plan section. We, you know, looked at existing funding and programs, staff capacity, anticipated timelines, and identified lead departments and and external regional partners for each action as well. But one thing, you know, I did want to highlight is that some of the actions build upon existing programs. Obviously, there's a lot of overlap across multiple departments, like our transportation initiatives, our waste reduction initiatives. So some of the actions build upon existing programs with secured funding, but others are new and will require additional resources to help support full implementation. So we will be pretty strategic moving forward in terms of identifying new grants to pursue and additional revenue sources to help support that. The Climate Action Plan is intended to be a living document. So I think as Councilmember Curd indicated earlier in the meeting, that it will go through a regular update process as we have new greenhouse gas inventory data. We do plan to continue to partner with K four C to leverage resources to acquire that data and also work with a singular consultant to help support that work. So when we did the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three inventories for this year, Cascadia Consulting was the lead on that. And they did the citywide inventories for all K four C members. And then they also helped support the municipal inventories for cities that elected to do that for a very nominal and affordable fee, since we were doing it collectively as a group. And we do outline steps within the plan as well to provide you all, as well as the community, with regular updates on progress. So this will be something that we come back to in the coming years with updates about. And then on that topic, just wanted to highlight, you know, that we are not taking on this challenge alone. K four C is one of our partners, but our Snohomish County partners as well. But through K four C, you know, they regularly support joint studies, like the greenhouse gas inventories that I mentioned. They develop model ordinances that reduce a lot of individual staff time developing code, but that cities can use to more quickly adopt certain policies. They often host collective group subsidy programs or campaigns to provide reduced costs for heat pump installations or solar. And then we also regularly collaborate on on educational campaigns across the region as well. And then the Climate Commitment Act, through that statewide program, there is a lot of additional funding available to support implementation. Just as an example, I sat in on a webinar, actually, earlier today on the Department of Commerce's EV Grant Program. And so that's a great program that we could look to to support charging infrastructure installations in the future, so. In terms of public feedback, this chart up here kind of summarizes the overall engagement that was conducted as part of this plan. So early on, we formed a volunteer advisory committee of community members to help inform the plan. We conducted two public surveys, hosted two community workshops focused on connecting people with resources in terms of energy efficiency rebates, as well as our regional transportation providers and some of the incentive programs that they offer. And then in, over the summer, we published the initial draft plan that y'all saw back in July and opened that up for public comment and have incorporated that feedback in the final plan. That's before you all tonight. Let's see. So just a couple of highlights of what we kind of heard from the community. So throughout the project, we did hear strong community support for proactive climate action. In both of our surveys, ninety five percent of survey respondents noted that it was important or very important that Bothell proactively reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And when we asked, how aggressive should the city's greenhouse gas reduction targets be? Eighty eight percent said they should at least meet or exceed state targets. So the other thing I wanted to highlight is that through this work, you know, we identified a lot of great things that are happening already. A lot of community members are already engaged in this work. So through this plan, it'll really be able to provide us a way to support that and grow those efforts over the coming years. So for public comments on the draft, we did utilize a new platform for that, that hopefully you all were able to take a look at. We definitely found it much more user friendly than, say, for instance, what we used for the comprehensive plan, where people kind of had to go section by section rather than directly within the document. And so this platform is part of our Engage Bothell platform to kind of provide that seamless interface for people to make direct comments on future public documents as well. So we'll look to continue using this in the future. So the public public comment period ran through the end of July, through all of August. We posted notices about it through the city website and our newsflash on the homepage, our e-news listserv, social media accounts, and Engage Bothell, and also tried to leverage a lot of the in-person events over the summer to gain people's attention about it. So overall, we ended up seeing just over thirteen hundred individual views. And I will qualify that, that that does include repeat visitors. Ended up receiving forty eight total comments from eleven different commentators. And the nice thing about this platform as well is that it kind of categorizes what those comments are. So whether they were clarifying questions, more substantive suggestions, or typo or formatting edits. So a couple of common themes that we saw across those comments were to better consider Bothell's local context and just highlight how some of the existing barriers to implementation. So just as an example, Bothell's topography and weather conditions during the rainy season that might limit pedestrian biking solutions during part of the year or make them more challenging for folks. And then also considering and better highlighting some of the potential impacts to affordability. So in terms of planned revisions, between the previous draft version that you had saw and this one, they were relatively minor, primarily updating. primarily updating some of the narrative sections to better highlight those existing barriers and affordability considerations, adding local community success stories to the community action section, improving and replacing a couple of graphics, and then updating the final community engagement summary to capture all of the final round of engagement over the summer. So we did review the updated plan with the Planning Commission at their September seventeenth and October first meetings. The Planning Commission recommends adoption of the plan as submitted and expressed strong support for it. And the one thing they did want to acknowledge is that due to the limited scope that I mentioned earlier, primarily focusing on mitigation, some additional work is needed on the resilience and adaptation side of things. You know, as we were kind of scoping this project, we did know that the urban forest plan would be in development in parallel as well as the countywide hazard mitigation annex, which is being updated currently. So we'll look to fold some of the recommendations from both of those in terms of resilience and adaptation into future iterations of this plan. So with that, I will open it up for discussion. As the city manager mentioned, primarily just looking to clarify any remaining questions that you all have or make sure that we're able to address any remaining gaps or concerns before we come back on November eighteenth.
I'll say something and then everyone else can jump in. There's eighty-three actions with five focus areas. Are we going to tie strategies and goals to achieving those actions? And are we going to set dates for some of those things as part of our goals for achieving them? There's a nodding head, yes.
Yeah, so as part of the implementation plan, we left it a little bit more vague because we know there will be shifting priorities over the coming years. So we went through each action and kind of delegated whether it was already ongoing, something that was a short-term priority. So in the next year or two, year to three years, midterm being like that three to five years range or a long term, that's going to require significant additional resources or planning efforts to really get those underway.
And when I was looking at, when I was thumbing through the strategies, I noticed that most of them are things that you can measure as well. So will there be a plan? You said you're going to update it every two to three years. During that time, will there be updates that come to the council on what's been achieved and what the next steps are?
Yes, so kind of similar to some of our other programs, I think we would, at a minimum, plan to provide you all with an annual update on what's been accomplished over the past year and kind of the look ahead. The plan also includes, like you mentioned, some key performance indicators or targets for each of the focus areas. So we went ahead and identified some data sources for each that we can track progress on and come back and share those with you so that we can really see the progress as it's being made.
Great. And I'm assuming that there's some resiliencies so that if there's some staff changing over time, city staff can come in and fill the gaps to keep it moving forward?
Yes, the goal was to set it up for success. Even if staff turnover occurs, hopefully someone that comes in to save my position in the future would be able to take the plan and really run with it, even with minimal background knowledge.
Okay. I have to say, I looked at the comments that people made and I saw some of them were repeat comments. And it was just great to see how invested folks are in our community. The only thing that I want to add, I saw that Shoreline's got some great activities that are tree-related and I hope that some of them might be good fits for us. The only thing that I want to say, to just comment on is that we can reduce carb, we can reduce carbon, but if we're taking down trees that fix our carbon and sequester our carbon by the tons, we're kind of treading water. We're not really making any kind of advancement. So I am eager for the urban tree forest and I hope that the city will move into a inventory of all the trees in Bothell so that we know trees are very, you know, they're planted, they look passive, but they're pretty active workers in our city. And if we're not proactive in protecting them, it's not going to, what we do in reducing carbon isn't going, it's just going to, we're just going to be spinning our wheels. So just wanted to add that comment. Thank you for doing this.
People are looking at me. Thank you. Cameron, thanks for coming to give the presentation and for all the amount of work that you've done over your time here at the city so far. It's been a tremendous amount of work, but I think it's really paid off. I know that participants in the advisory group really feel connected and feel like their input made a difference. And that's really what I like to see, our community development department really integrating people's ideas and being sort of a bottom-up approach. So I'm really happy that this isn't sort of a mandate that came down and we directed everything. I really like that it was a community-directed process. So thanks for all your work in facilitating that. I know it's been a long journey. I think I might take a different approach about trees. And it says here on page twenty-six of the plan about carbon sequestration that Bothell's trees absorb roughly five thousand megatons of carbon dioxide per year, which is less than one percent of the city's total emissions in 2023. That's nothing. And so really, this plan to me drives home how important and how detrimental our transportation uses as a historic auto-oriented community have dug us into a deep hole. So it really integrates well with our vision to make a more, give people options for transportation. They don't always, we're not mandating that everyone walk everywhere or ride their bike to council meetings, but it is fun. And I just really appreciate that we don't rely too heavily on trees to save us because they will not if we continue status quo. So I'm really appreciative that we have a more comprehensive look at what actually is the issue. Let's see clearly and start making progress towards goals of reducing reliance on single-occupant vehicles. So really grateful for that. I think one of the things that I see in the plan to some extent is that the city, rightly so, takes a center stage because that's the stuff that we can control. But we also don't control very much. I think in here, it's like we generate as a city operations point four percent of the city of Bothell's emissions, which is also nothing. So inherently, everything that we do is a little bit grandstanding. And one of the things that I've heard from several members of staff when they've come to us and we've suggested is that we can't electrify our landscaping equipment because the technology just isn't there yet, in air quotes. Fine, and the former Wayne Golf Course is a lot bigger than my backyard. But I still think that we need to be, one of the things here is we need to lead by example. And so even if there's some, it's not as efficient to use battery electric, it's hard to charge them or it's hard to maintain such a big fleet of electric landscaping equipment, we need to lead by example. And where it's possible to incorporate that into our operations. And so I know it's such a tiny sliver. If I'm reading the graph on page two sixty-four of our packet that shows where the city's emissions come from, I'm thinking that it's part of that off-road fleet, which is less than one percent of the point four percent of emissions. So it's nothing. But we're asking people in these boxes to consider using electric lawn equipment. So if we're asking our community to do that, we need to do it ourselves too. Because if we're trying to build momentum, and I mean, I don't like grandstanding, but this is one where I think we just need to kind of like show the community that we're invested and we're involved. And that's one way that people see the city in their neighborhood, the city in their backyard, using equipment that generates a lot less sound, is a lot better for the environment. We know it might not be moving the needle a lot, but it's inspiring. So I think that's something that I'd really like to see. I'd also love to hear from the campuses, the co-campuses, what is their part of our city's emissions? And how are they, I know they're working on it. And there've been a couple of emails that have circulated to council members about scheduling one-on-ones with some student groups. And I encourage us to strengthen that relationship on the climate front because they are a big component of our city. They generate a lot of vehicle trips. And so I'm sure that they have an outsized impact in employee commute, just because they're a large employer and they participate in commute trip reduction program too. So I'd like to see what they're doing and what are their goals? And how can we integrate that into our plan? And so it's too late to incorporate it by November, but I think that this is a great start for us to use and shop with our community and see other businesses. I was really inspired to see that there are a couple of businesses that are already participating or are leading on climate resiliency in their own organizations and are working towards net zero, which is awesome. That's inspiring to see in our community. And I want to demonstrate to more people that it's doable and that we can do this together. So yeah, that was my long-winded feedback. But if I have any other question on this, it's how can we better leverage K-4C in our existing partnerships? And what are some ways that we might be able to make our tracking and our updating in the future more efficient by partnering with other communities who are also invested and have very similar strategies, if not the same ones? How can we learn from them and collaborate with them on saving money while also the planet?
I was just going to follow up on the tree conversation really quickly. So you made a good point that sequestration from trees is a small portion of our overall greenhouse gas inventory. But I think it was one of the most common things. We know it's an important issue in our community and preservation of trees provide a lot of other community benefits. So that was one of the key things that we wanted to emphasize in the messaging, especially with this plan as well as within the urban forestry plan, is that while it may not substantially get at the greenhouse gas emission problem, it provides a lot of other community benefits. So we want to kind of highlight both while acknowledging that.
Totally. And I'm the first one to criticize the school district for the overlap between the lack of canopy on their properties and the heat islands that it's creating for our city. So I think that I'm, I still like trees. We still need trees. We need tree protections. But it's not going to save us from cars.
Can I just jump in with a quick comment? Because I love my battery-driven camera phone blower. But I am also keenly aware of where lithium is sourced from. And we were talking about human trafficking earlier this evening. And lithium is sourced in very inhumane, inhumane conditions in other parts of the planet. So when we look to electrify, how can we soften that gorging on lithium with other ways to electrify? Do you have a long extension cord for everything? I don't know. But as a city, I would like to see us find ways to soften as we go electrify things. How can we not do everything that's a lithium battery-dependent? And that's not an answer that can be made in the next year or two. I think it's going to be a long process. But I would love it as a community if we're mindful of those lithium batteries that we bring into our community, what the cost is, and just be really mindful of it. And if there's another way to soften the lithium usage, please, let's do it.
Yes, and there's also the fact that our dependence on oil and gas is extremely inhumane on a global scale, too. And so just living in society causes us to participate in global economies that are very detrimental. And so reducing impact where possible, looking to the future, legislating policy, trying to get towards more equitable and healthy outcomes for everyone in our globe, on our globe, is really critical. So electrifying isn't to say, let's be dependent on another resource that's extracted and harvested and hurts people. But let's be real about what we're doing right now, too, with our dependence on oil. So yeah, I think that that has a merit, but we also need to think about our existing patterns and what we're existing hurt to the planet and to people, too. And it's often unseen.
To that conversation, before moving to my other remarks, is I would very much love to see international law and international standards be put into place that, you know, kind of like we have fair trade chocolate. We should have fair trade batteries. And that should be something that is happening on a global scale where countries are working together to properly regulate and standardize the ways that people extract resources and including extracting labor from people who are responsible for getting those resources out of the ground. But that is a much more interesting conversation for another time and another venue. But highly recommend getting involved in federal legislative conversations when, you know, when talking about things that are beyond our jurisdiction and at that scale. But I just want to talk to staff and say, I'm so excited that we've made it this far. When I first joined council, there were members of the people who ended up, so people who ended up serving on the advisory committee came to me and said, when is the city going to do a climate action plan? And now they are serving on the committee. And that is so exciting to see that come full circle over the course of my term, to see young people there, to see local experts. Like I am beyond inspired and excited by the group of people who came together to shape this. And there was a moment where I counted up the number of community members who, like, and this is not just people who gave comment, but people who signed up and invested time by serving on an advisory body. It's almost forty people on that page. And that is one of the biggest efforts I have seen made by our community to include community in the shaping of city policy. And I don't want to miss the opportunity to acknowledge that and say that. It is inspiring. It is exciting. And, you know, thank you to the Department of Commerce for, you know, helping fund this process. Thank you to each of the staff who contributed to this process, the consultants, the fellow. Like, there was, it's just a really great group of people who came together to make this happen. And I just, can there be like a reunion of like, because, but I, you know, it's the same way that we've had opportunities as council to meet with advisory bodies. I think it, like, maybe at the end of this, it might be very nice to get the Planning Commission, the city council, and the advisory body together and just like take a moment to appreciate. to appreciate the contributions that they've made to our community. I would like, so, thank you to a lot of people. And it feels inadequate, but that's the best I can do at 9:40 in it. You know, if you're watching on cable access later. But to the implementation of how we move forward with this, I very much would like to see like a three-year work plan horizon, like, kind of like the way we've done with our city council priorities and with our DEI plan, is that once we have a big plan, then it goes into a work plan phase and we can start, like, I'm looking forward to seeing that for that next planning horizon. And I think that it's already in the works and planned to do that, but I'm, I'm excited to see that next phase because it will be, like, to take these 84 goals, right, and turn them into what is actionable over a three-year planning horizon would be fascinating to determine what, what you're going to work on. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. I do appreciate that within this plan, that transportation greenhouse gas emissions are being prioritized and that there's a lot of different strategies for reductions there. I'm really glad to see that there's a combo of approaches, including like work from home, reducing trips, and also EV incentives. I, you know, I just recently started commuting for the first time in 20 years, and one of the first things I did is I went out and I used a, I think a state or federal rebate to get an electric vehicle. And now I use my employer to charge my car, including the city of Bothell, thank you. And I would love to see that be more accessible to, to more people throughout our community, and I know that that's part of the plan. It's, you know, expanding the, the charging stations that are available throughout the city here at City Hall, great. But also, you know, what are, I'm curious about what are some of those incentives that could help not just the city employees access electric vehicles to reduce their emissions, but also our, our residents and people who live here. I also just want to make a point that one of the reasons why we have some, like, a major contributor to greenhouse gas emissions is housing affordability. When people cannot afford to live where they work, they commute further and longer. And not only is it a drain on our environment and on our roadways, does it, it negatively impacts our communities, but it also negatively impacts people's individual health. And so anything, like, whenever we talk about housing, we're also talking about climate action. Because if we can help reduce the number of people who feel like they have to commute from further to get to work, then we are helping have a positive impact on the environment. And that includes, you know, we're about to, we're about to see a significant portion of our population here in Bothell have to start commuting back to work again with the return-to-work orders that are being issued by major companies in the area. And that will, once again, have an even bigger impact on our greenhouse gas emissions. So I see employment policy, housing policy is deeply, deeply integrated into this conversation. So as, you know, we will continue to work from all angles to improve the health and well-being of our community and our environment. This is a hugely important part of it. I'm grateful to be a part of it. Thank you for listening.
I really appreciate the, the climate action plan. I think it helps me, when we look at policy decisions, understand the sources that we're trying to combat. I think it's, it's really easy to focus on an area that we might see a lot or have a lot of feelings about, but it really, the data is very appreciated. So I am just going to say, very well done, and thank you for it. And I want to echo what everyone said about getting so many community members involved. That is really cool and also a lot of work to organize so many people, so thank you for that.
I want to thank you for this also. I think we've come a long way as a city in having our climate action plan. As a living document is very important, I think. With a new communications team, maybe we can have even more community engagement moving forward, but as a initial version, getting something out there, and to Councilmember Dodd's, I also know, like, knowing the sources that contribute is extremely important. So thank you for, for all the work you've done. Appreciate it.
I have nothing to say that my colleagues have not already said eloquently, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting.